So you have to use a lot of your instincts for diving to deploy these floats.
So it can be dangerous.
Absolutely, because if the dock is deteriorating, we have stuff falling on us.
The fire may have been a small blip on the radar screen for most businesses here, but many know that a bigger blaze could have been devastating in an area that handles 40% of the nation's import cargo.
Meanwhile, firefighters lost much of their diving equipment fighting the blaze.
We lost up to about close to $30,000, but the upscale on that is we kept the port open. They make millions of dollars here every day, and we stopped the fire from spreading.
So far, no estimates on fire damage or economic impact, but those who live and work here know it could have been a lot worse. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
And in this weekend tweet, city leaders took to Twitter to thank fire officials for their quick action to put out the fire at the port. The mayor's own personal Twitter account, @EricGarcetti tweeted, "Congrats to LAFD and LAFD chief for incredible work at the port tonight. Due to their heroic work, port operations won't be interrupted." Councilman Joe Bustagno, who represents the port area, tweeted, "Great work, LAFD containing tonight's fire on the Wilmington waterfront. Thankfully, no injuries." The Port of LA was also in a thankful mood, tweeting, "Another round of thanks to our Long Beach neighbors, Port of Long Beach Long Beach FD, for helping us put out the Berth 177 fire." After 25 years in Lincoln Heights, the District Office of Council District One has officially moved. Gil Reyes reports from the grand opening of its new location.
Dancing in the streets of Highland Park, people celebrated the kickoff of LA's Latin Jazz music festival, also the opening of government offices so close they could walk there.
We haven't had a council office in Highland Park, I don't think ever, so I'm really proud that the office is here, that we can just walk up and ask the questions, talk to who we need to talk to to get the issues resolved that we need to resolve in our community.
The District Office of Council District One officially opens at its new location in this former Masonic temple. The 91-year-old building in Highland Park is on the National Registry of Historic Places. The opening took place a year late because of problems with the building's windows. See them on the top left of your screen? Oh, they look great now, restored to their original look, a mosaic of mini glass panels. But here's how the windows looked last year, the miniature squares removed by the owner. This didn't work well for LA's preservation officials, so they ordered the original look back with refurbished windows.
$15,000 to $20,000 of craftsmanship, because we believe and recognize in our traditions and our history, but we also believe in looking forward to a great future.
Some residents in the former Lincoln Heights location are disappointed by the move a few miles north, but area councilman Gil Sadio says the new office will provide better access and visibility for constituents throughout his district.
Everyone will be represented. Every voice will be heard.
At the new Council District One office on Figueroa Street in Highland Park, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The building, built in 1923, once stood as a lodge for the free and accepted masons for 60 years. And you just heard mention of Councilman Sadio's inaugural Latin Jazz Festival. Yana Kay takes us to the event celebrating music and community.
The smooth and soulful sounds of Latin jazz fill the air, getting everyone on their feet as they hit the dance floor.
Music wonderful, yeah.
The music is part of the very first Latin Jazz and Music Festival held at Sycamore Grove Park in Highland Park. The two-day event was put on by Councilmember Gil Sadio.
This is part of what I talked about in my campaign, about creating a community, taking advantage of the fact that in the Northeast, it's a very artistic, bohemian community, a lot of talent, and so we wanted to create venues for them, and that's what we're doing.
And more than 14 bands took the opportunity to perform for the crowd and showcase their talents.
This event is fantastic. I mean, really, just have all these great musicians come together and just perform for a community, it's just something really beautiful to see.
The crowd got to show off some of their own dance talents as they moved to the rhythm and sounds of the music.
I love the Latin music in general, so I'm just here to enjoy the music and enjoy the day and enjoy, you know, a night out with family.
A combination that's hard to beat. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
Jews around the world recently observed Rosh Hashanah, a two-day holiday marking the Jewish New Year. Gil Reyes reports from a special ceremony at LA City Hall.
Blowing of the shofar, or ram's horn, ushers in the year 5775 for the Jewish people, but Rosh Hashanah is also a time to reflect deeply on the past year, a notable one for Jewish West Side councilman Paul Coretts.
Because I overcame my fear of flying and finally traveled to Israel for the first time.
And that we can come together as a city, as a community, as a nation, to do whatever is necessary to make sure that our country and our community is better than it was the year before.
In case you were counting, at one point, the city of LA had six Jewish members on the LA City Council. Now it is down to three. The city's top three elected officials, however, do happen to be Jewish. They are, of course, the city comptroller, the city attorney, and of course, the mayor.
Quoting from the Old Testament, North Ridge Area Councilman Mitchell Englander reminds fellow Jews to share with the poor. Colleagues say they look forward to the future.
That offers the promise of bringing us closer together, offers the promise of all of us reaching out and lifting up everybody in our city.
We need to make our communities better. We need to make our districts better. We need to make ourselves better.
At City Hall, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Rosh Hashanah is the beginning of 10 days of awe for Jews around the world, leading to Yom Kippur, the Day of Atonement. The federal government has given California the green light for the design of its driver licenses for undocumented immigrants. A downtown dog park reopens, and a new exhibit at LAX shines the spotlight on Latinos in Hollywood. These stories and more in City Beat.
The Department of Homeland Security has approved the design for the California driver's license for undocumented immigrants. The new design will have the phrase "Federal Limits Apply" on the front of the card in the upper right-hand corner. In response, LA Councilman Gil Sadio released a statement saying, quote, "I look forward to seeing the California Department of Motor Vehicles implement the new design so that over a million motorists in California will make our highways safe and secure." The LAPD continues its efforts to incorporate small libraries within its community police stations with the unveiling of this little free library inside the LAPD Southeast Area Police Station on South 108th Street.
Right now, we have a lot of kids that come here and they just walk in to say hi. We've tried to change the culture of the officers of this station. We've tried to change the relationship between the community and the police.
In its most basic form, little free libraries, which can be located online via a registry, are a place where people can pick up a book or contribute a book, no library cards necessary. The Los Angeles Downtown Arts District Dog Park on 4th Street recently celebrated its grand reopening with a big party. Improvements at the park, also called Sasslow Dog Park, include a new mural by a graffiti artist. Councilmember Jose Wezar, who represents downtown, also attended the ribbon cutting.
It's a gift to the neighborhood. We're loving it.
It's definitely nice for them to have a place where they can meet other dogs and in a closed space where they're safe.
While the land is being loaned to the community by the city, the park is not operated by the city. Those behind the effort are asking the public to donate to cover operational costs by purchasing stainless steel dog bone plaques, which will feature the name of the donor and a brief message. The Latinos in Hollywood photo exhibit has been unveiled at LAX Terminal 4 in celebration of Latino Heritage Month. As an estimated 14,000-plus travelers move through LAX each day, the exhibit will offer them a glimpse into what Latinos have contributed to LA's entertainment past and present. Included are images of icons of years past, such as Rita Hayworth, Desi Arnaz, and Anthony Quinn, alongside present-day stars Rita Moreno, Hector Elizondo, Eva Longoria, and Zoe Saldana, among others.
The CHP is working with senior citizens to help them with their driving skills as they get older. Gil Reyes reports on the Age Well Drive Smart program hosted by the Office of Councilman Bob Blumenfield.
The test begins for the senior drivers evaluating their reaction time. The goal: to connect as many of these sporadically placed numbers in order using a pen. You have 10 seconds. Connect 10 or more numbers, and your reflexes are good. Connect five or fewer numbers, and you may want to consider handing over the keys.
It makes you like, oh, boy, I'm not as good as I thought I was.
The test, part of this Age Well Drive Smart seminar hosted by CHP senior volunteers. Students receive this free Senior Drivers Manual sanctioned by the CHP. It contains the test and self-assessment questionnaires about confidence at intersections, trouble when making turns, and the like.
We're not coming in saying, you can't drive anymore. We're letting them make the decision.
Rules are neither the DMV nor law enforcement can revoke your license based on your age, so it's up to you and your family to decide when's the right time to stop or limit driving. When confronting an aging parent, sensitivity is needed. Patricia Claude likes that she can take the test home and in private.
Because you can do it on your own, you don't have anybody else asking you about it.
The District Office of Councilman Bob Blumenfield hosted the seminar, knowing by the year 2020, California will be home to over 4 million drivers age 65 or older.
As I get up there, I'm actually thinking about what we need to be safe drivers, so we just thought it was a great opportunity for our surrounding neighbors to use this great site we have here.
The best way to receive one of these informative booklets is to book an Age Well Drive Smart Symposium at your local church or other organization. You can do that best by contacting the number at the bottom of your screen, 1-818-888-0980, extension 225. In recita, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Despite well-placed concern for elderly drivers, studies show seniors are actually responsible for fewer accidents than teenagers and drunk drivers. An eclectic art gathering in Elysian Park had everything you could possibly ask for. Oil paintings, hula hoops, and the LA River were all on the agenda for the ninth annual Frog Town Art Walk. Anna Marcos takes us there.
The name is as whimsical as the art event itself. The Frog Town Art Walk celebrated its ninth annual show, and what a setting, right along the LA River at Elysian Park. Among the star attractions, this new installation of kinetic art. Yep, art that moves.
I've been involved since the very beginning, when I was on staff of the 13th District before I was elected, and I've seen it grow from just a few street segments late at night to this, an event that starts at about 5 o'clock and runs into the wee hours, and it involves the entire community now, not just the artists who live here.
The artists and artisans of this art community opened their studios and pop-up galleries to any and all visitors for free. There was even a chalk walk for those called to express the artist in all of us. And a little kinetic moving art never hurts either. Music, multimedia performances, art, poetry, nature, and lots of people to share it with. All in all, a perfect summer night. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
In this week's list of things to do, kids learning to make their own puppets, cleaning up the beach, and a public star party.
It's not your typical arts and crafts class. On Saturday, October 4th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., the Puppet School at 13440 Ventura Boulevard's Suite 108 in Sherman Oaks will hold a two-hour workshop teaching kids step by step how to trace, cut, hot glue, and decorate their own puppets, all under the supervision of talented and friendly builders. Parents are invited to the last 30 minutes to watch your kids perform with their new friends. The class is designed for kids ages 5 to 11 years old. For more information, go to puppetschool.com. On the first Saturday of each month, and in October, that falls on October 4th, join Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators and volunteers from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. as they maintain the Cabrillo Native Garden and learn about its plant and animal inhabitants. Also, join other volunteers in a beach cleanup clearing the shore of marine debris. Groups are required to make reservations by the Thursday before the event. The aquarium is located at 3720 Stephen M. White Drive in San Pedro. Go to cabriomarineaquarium.org for details. Seeing stars isn't difficult in Los Angeles, especially if you're talking about the kind that's up in the sky. The Griffith Observatory hosts free public star parties monthly from 2:00 to 9:45 p.m. with the assistance of volunteers from the Los Angeles Astronomical Society, the Los Angeles Sidewalk Astronomers, and the Planetary Society. The next star party will take place on Saturday, October 4th. The parties are a chance for the whole family to look at the sun, moon, visible planets, and other objects, to try out a variety of telescopes, and to talk to knowledgeable amateur astronomers about the sky and their equipment. The Griffith Observatory is located at 2800 East Observatory Road. Go to griffithobservatory.org for details, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
Things are starting to cool down a bit now, but during the recent three-digit heat wave, visitors and the animals themselves got a chance to stay cool at the zoo. Yana Kay reports.
Visitors to the LA Zoo are barely visible as they are drenched by this powerful stream of mist. This cool zone is just one of many chill-out spots located at the zoo to help visitors beat the heat.
It's a great idea. Javier is enjoying them very much. He loves the mist.
The misters are all part of the annual It's Cool at the Zoo event, giving visitors and animals a chance to cool off as temperatures hover above 100 degrees. Families enjoyed all sorts of activities. Kids got up close and personal with ice sculptures almost as big as they were, and for parents as well as the kids, it was certainly a favorite chill-out spot. Visitors also got to check out cool ice carving demonstrations. And the animals were not left out in the cold as they enjoyed frozen treats in the form of giant popsicles filled with their favorite foods. And with these misters at every turn, it certainly was cool at the zoo. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
We don't just walk or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter, blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware, move with care, watch the road.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. Offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
The building, built in 1923, once stood as a lodge for the free and accepted masons And you just heard mention of Councilman Sadio's inaugural Latin Jazz Festival. Yana Kay takes us to the event celebrating music and community.
The smooth and soulful sounds of Latin jazz fill the air, getting everyone on their feet as they hit the dance floor.
Music is part of the very first Latin Jazz and Music Festival held at Sycamore Grove The two-day event was put on by Councilmember Gil Sadio.
This is part of what I talked about in my campaign, about creating a community, taking advantage of the fact that in the Northeast, it's a very artistic, bohemian community, a lot of talent, and so we wanted to create venues for them, and that's what we're doing.
And more than 14 bands took the opportunity to perform for the crowd and showcase their
I mean, really, just have all these great musicians come together and just perform for a community, it's just something really beautiful to see.
The crowd got to show off some of their own dance talents as they moved to the rhythm
Offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter, blind to the things that could actually save our life. All right, so we'll call those special. Sergeants, do you have any cards? We've completed the cards, the tasks of the cards. You're correct. Mr. Parks?
Clarify is 23 a closed session item?
Mr. City Attorney, would you answer that?
It's agenda is for possible closed session.
Okay. And then on 28, I'd just like to have a verbal amendment.
All right, on 28, Madam Clerk, for the attention. Special on 28. So let's, on the remaining, on the balance. See no other specials. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
11 eyes. All righty. Madam Clerk, on number 12, let's open the roll for reconsideration. Hold the roll. Call the roll. Tabulate the vote. All right, for reconsideration, put it on the desk and hold it right now. Thank you for 12. Now, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings counsel to presentations or items called special?
Mr. Sadio of the First District, we have a presentation on your agenda right now. Thank you very much. Mr. Sadio, just one moment, please. Mr. Cocorion, we welcome you. Madam Clerk, for the interest of the Clerk's office, we have 12 members at this time for the ordinances and the interest of the city business, on those items that are 12 on ordinance, could we reconsider those right now?
Yes, those are items 2, 3, and 8.
2, 3, and 8. Open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes. And now on the actual matters. Good. So ordered. Thank you very much, Mrs... Let's vote on this. Items on the remaining balance. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes. Very good. Now, Madam Clerk, I'm going to return to the podium, Mr. Sadio, for a very special presentation.
Señor Presidente. Mr. President. I'm very excited about what we're doing here today. For over a decade and close to 15 years, there has been this effort to collaborate between the state of California, the city of Los Angeles, and the government of Mexico. And this collaboration is focused on how do we deliver health care services to a community that is largely immigrant, to a community that is part of a diaspora, to a community that plays a vital role in our economy, in our social life, and in the future of this city and the state and this nation? How do we do that? How do we do that in a manner that's culturally sensitive and linguistically competent? We do that through tremendous leadership. And we do that through a commitment of all these entities who are committed to ensuring that, one, that the question of health care is a fundamental human right, that it is a right that is endowed upon all people by our God, our Lord, and that it is a right in which it cannot be denied. And that your legal status is not important to your health care situation, and that these entities of leadership will collaborate to make sure that we can deliver health care. And so for, as I said, over a decade, close to 15 years, this collaboration has been ongoing. This is the sixth year... This is the sixth year that the city of Los Angeles has collaborated with the Mexican consulate, with the state of California, with the private sector that delivers health care in this community. This is the sixth year that we have what is called, for October, the month of health. And what will happen, it will be a series of health care fairs that will take place throughout the city, open to the public, free to the public, in which basic primary care services will be provided, referral services will be provided, and that the community that is in great need of these services, both the education, the prevention, and the delivery of these services, will have access for this month. And this will ensure that the city of Los Angeles remains a city, not just of angels, but of people of good health and good mind. And so it's a great honor that we're here today with the Mexican consulate to acknowledge this month, the month of health, for October, the sixth year that we've done this. And with this, we'd like to present this resolution. Juan Carlos Mendoza is the Deputy Counsel General of Mexico, and he will address us, to be followed by Francisco de la Torre, the Executive Director of EME.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Good morning, Mr. President. It's an honor for me to be here. On behalf of the governor of Mexico, I would like to express our deepest gratitude for your support in this health program. For us, it's very important to promote the right, the people. We consider that the people is important in this community, and we consider that the access to the health services is not a privilege. It must be a right for any person. It doesn't matter regardless of nationality, regardless of migratory status. And we Mexicans are believers of the shared responsibility. That was the reason since 2001, the Mexican government developed a strategy that we call the Binational Health Week in order to promote the Mexican communities abroad. This is a very generous program. Since six years ago, we transformed this program into month of health. And this program is open not only to Mexicans, but any people who request this health service. This program is open for any person in Los Angeles. And because of this, we express the gratitude of the Mexican government to the Los Angeles City Council for helping in promoting this service to all the communities, not Mexican communities, but any member of the Angelino community. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, Francisco de la Torre is the Executive Director of what's called the Institute of los Mexicanos en el Exterior. The Institute of Mexicans Living Abroad, it's referred to as EME. It's one of the most fascinating governmental institutions that you can imagine. As we know, 11 million Mexicans live here with undocumented status, their children, their spouses, their families. This huge community, part of a diaspora from Mexico, is not without a connection and institutional, governmental connection to Mexico. And that is the role of the Institute for Mexicans Living Abroad. Their role is to ensure that they live here, that they engage in civic participation, that they are responsible, and that they have a connection both to Mexico and an understanding of their responsibilities while here in the United States. They are separate from the Foreign Ministry, they are independent, and they are a body that engages the children, who now are elected officers, governmental officers, like myself, like Felipe Fuentes, like Jose Wezar, like Nuri Martinez, engages us to have the appropriate relationships with Mexicans living abroad here in our country to make sure that they comply with the law, that they engage in civic participation, and that their fundamental rights are protected. With that, it is a great honor to introduce the Executive Director of that august institution, Francisco de la Torre.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few moments ago, they offered me a translation. I hope my English is good enough and fair for addressing this counsel. I would like to begin by letting you know what an honor it is for me to be here today in such an important event for the Mexican government, for the Mexican government and for the health of our very large community living in Los Angeles. In the field of health, in coordination with Mexico's Health Ministry, we are proud to offer two very important initiatives here in the states. Ventanillas de Salud and the program of the Binational Health Week that is called here in Los Angeles, Mes de la Salud. This year, Mes de la Salud, which literally means month of health, is an extraordinary innovation by the Mexican consulate in Los Angeles and celebrates its sixth consecutive year, reaching even more people. This great effort brings together social organizations, health professionals, and county agencies, along with private entities and volunteers, in order to improve the health and well-being of those who need it the most. We'd like to thank our local partners, because without their effort, it would be impossible to reach out our goals. Their participation, along with that of Los Angeles County and the council, keeps us going on and going strong in the pursuit of bringing health to our communities. Here, I would like to point out that our very own counselor of the Institute for the Mexicans Abroad, Marina Álvarez, proud born and raised Californian, recently was awarded with the Public Health Excellence Award. Felicidades, Marina. Any award or proclamation to the Mexican consulate in Los Angeles, to the government of Mexico, is, as a matter of fact, an award of recognition to each and every volunteer, to the county, to the state, and any authority involved in this great effort. For this reason, let me raise my voice to say muchas gracias a todos señores concejales. It is with great pride that I take part in this proclamation ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, let me say, you know, the nature of the process of politics in Mexico, and particularly in their diplomatic forces, is that they have term limits, and that no sooner than we get comfortable and familiar and friendly with their representatives, that they get reassigned. They're much like the Catholic Church in many ways. And so with that, we would, in my office in particular, would like to thank Gaspar Arrozco, who will be now leaving to a new post, but thank him for his time here in the city of Los Angeles, one of the most amiable representatives that we have had the privilege of dealing with, with the Mexican consulate. And so we thank him, on behalf of the city, for his great service to those residents here in the city of Los Angeles. Gaspar.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sadio. I'll be very brief. I just want to, I just want to say thank you to City Hall, to the authorities of Los Angeles, and it has been an honor and a privilege to serve as a counsel for community affairs in Los Angeles. I was previously posted in New York, and I want to say that this is a most wonderful community, and we would like to recognize the commitment and the support of the council members. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio, what a special presentation to our friends from Mexico. Thank you, gracias. Assistant City, Mexico City, Los Angeles, all the way. Olympic City, 68. Mexico City, 32, 84, and hopefully 24, Los Angeles, hopefully. Thank you, Mexico. Let's give them a big hand. Mr. Sadio, great job. Now for another very special presentation for a very special dynamic individual that he is going to honor. Mr. Wezar, I call you for this next presentation.
How are you? Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and wanted to welcome to our chambers someone who's no stranger, and we're here today to congratulate her on a very important and special recognition that Los Angeles should be proud of. Here we have an Eagle rocker, an Angelino, Teresa De Vera, who on February 1st of this year was crowned Ms. Wheelchair California. Teresa is talented, a community-oriented young woman who has made it her model that a disability is not an inability. Teresa is the daughter of former city council staffer Andreas and longtime Eagle rocker Ruby De Vera. And in her early twenties, Teresa was attending college, and she suffered a severe asthma attack which nearly killed her. It stopped her respiratory system and put her in months-long coma, during which time a feeding tube and a ventilator kept her alive. Brain wave scans showed her as being in a vegetative state. The doctors were not optimistic and told the family there was no hope. But her family refused to give up on her and never gave up on their hope. A doctor standing by her bedside suggested the family begin thinking of organ donation. Despite Teresa being in a deep coma, which is understood as the inability to feel pain or stimuli, someone noticed a tear running down Teresa's face after that the suggestion was made that a donor, organ donation should be arranged for. Over the course of a few more weeks, her mother noticed even more signs that Teresa was not as far gone as the doctors thought, and she refused to give up. First, there was just a twitch of her hand, then a wince or some tears when she was having her blood drawn. Then, one day, Ruby walked into Teresa's hospital room and said her name, and though still asleep, Teresa's head turned towards her as if in recognition. On July 4th, 1996, after three months of fighting for her life, the machines were able to be turned off, and Teresa breathed on her own again. It was, and still is, considered a medical miracle. Teresa learned to navigate in a wheelchair and worked to regain as much function as she could with her mind, excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm also thinking of my daughter who has leukemia. Teresa, you're a strong woman. Teresa learned to navigate in a wheelchair and worked to regain as much function as she could. With a mind as sharp as a tack, it was not easy, but she was determined. She proved that when there was a will, there's a way, and she is helping others with disabilities feel the same empowerment. In 2002, Teresa re-entered Loyola Marymount University to complete her undergraduate degree in political science, followed by earning a master's of pastoral theology, which she received in 2009. In September of 2005, she was appointed by Mayor Antonio Villargosa to the Commission on Disability to be the voice for the most underserved population in the city of Los Angeles. And in 2007, she was also appointed to the Access Services Board. Teresa was recognized in her leadership and advocacy in a video documentary, I Am Today's Filipino, showcasing 100 of the most emergently influential Filipinos in California. Teresa received numerous honors from federal, state, and local elected officials, government agencies, and community organizations, but she tells me she finds the greatest reward in making a difference in people's lives. And again, as I mentioned, on February 1st of this year, Teresa was crowned Ms. Wheelchair California and has since served as an ambassador, celebrating achievements, advancing opportunities, and opening doors of employment for members of the disabled community throughout California. Her work with the Special Olympics Summer Invitational led her to working alongside organizers for the Special Olympics World Games 2015. And in August, Teresa represented the state of California, competing for the title of Ms. Wheelchair America, where she won. won the Best Speech Award and was honored with a judge's special award, the Lifetime Achievement Award, that recognizes contributions to the disabled community since the onset of a person's disability. And ladies and gentlemen, I am honored to present Teresa May De Vera because she has defied the odds, exemplifies the values of family hope and courage, and has committed her life's work to furthering, furthering enlightenment and awareness that a disability is not an inability. And the city of Los Angeles at this time would like to present to her a recognition, not only for her title that she recently brought home to Los Angeles, but also for her continuous work and advocacy for disability. Congratulations, Teresa. May God bless you.
Teresa, Mr. Weezer.
I don't know how I, how I follow, how I follow that. Councilmember Weezer has been a huge, a huge supporter to me and my, and my family. It's not about the tiara or the sash or the titles that you hold, but it's about what you do with your life after overcoming, overcoming adversity and with faith and hope and also your family by your side, anything is possible. So never give up hope. Miracles do happen. I approve. And I love serving as the commissioner on the L.A. City Commission on Disabilities, Disabilities, where I, where I continue to help other individuals with disabilities find that living in L.A. a more feasible and tolerable city. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember.
Like I said, we're also joined today by Teresa's mother, Ruby De Vera, and also Daisy Bonilla from the Department of Disability. Thank you for joining us today, and thank you, Ruby, for all your work you've done for the city and for raising a beautiful daughter. Thank you so much. Congratulations again.
Congratulations, Teresa. We love you. We love your mother. What a great story. Give Teresa a big hand again. Now, at this time, Madam Clerk, I'd like to call number 12 special, 12 special right now on this item. So item 12 is before us. We'd like to ask Mr. Gary Tobin to approach. Please sit at the table, Gary, if you would, please. If you want to bring some of your team up here. Anybody here from FedEx? Because UPS is the best. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I got it right there. UPS is the best. I got it right there. I got it. I just teased it and all. Okay. Members, there has been a distribution of a report by the chamber to all staff. Mr. Tobin.
Thank you, members of the city council. It's our pleasure to be here with you this morning, and we extend our sincere appreciation for having us here in council to discuss what is still on everyone's mind, the jobs, jobs and the economy. Although we are certainly better off today, we still have fewer jobs in L.A. County than we did at the start of the Great Recession. Far too many Angelinos are still out of work or underemployed. Our social service agencies feel it, and so do the city's coffers. Jobs must be our highest priority. The business community share with you the goal of lifting people out of poverty, ensuring a healthy environment, increased affordable housing, and ending homelessness. When we disagree, the challenge comes not in the goal, but in the path chosen to reach that goal. We firmly believe that the path to meet our mutual goals lies with helping existing companies to expand and new companies to settle here and create jobs. The L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce, as many of you know, is much more than an organization that promotes business-friendly policies. We're at the forefront of some of the most important social issues facing our region today, including education reform, workforce development, and homelessness. We'd like to start off by sharing with you a number of the advocacy priorities that the chamber believes will help every Angelino and every business in our city. Following that, Chris Thornburg from Beacon Economics will walk you through a report on the economic performance of your individual council district, and we'll be happy to follow up those with individual presentations later if you would like. I'd like to introduce to you the people sitting with me. First of all, Noel Massey, who's the Chair of the Chamber's Board of Directors and President of UPS Southern California, Chris Thornburg, Principal at Beacon Economics, and Ruben Gonzalez, the Chamber's Senior Vice President for Public Policy and Political Affairs. We'll start with Noel and our first priority. Noel.
Thank you, Gary. First of all, it's a privilege to be in front of this esteemed group this morning and be able to have this conversation on behalf of a couple of fronts. The first is obviously for the partnership companies that are members of the L.A. Chamber of Commerce, 1,800-member companies. And then secondarily, to represent my organization in our efforts to help shift public policy. You know, UPS, we move 7% of the nation's GDP. No other company in America can say that they do that. We move 2% of the global GDP. No other company in the world can say they do that. We have complete and clear optics on what happens in economies on a county level, state level, city level. We believe that it's very important, along with the chamber, that the city of Los Angeles needs to proactively and aggressively welcome and extend itself to new businesses with a collective effort that signals to them that investing in the city and in your districts is obviously a very important thing, and it's not just up to the mayor and his business team. It has to be a collaborative effort, and clearly, the business people I talk to, which I do regularly and weekly, would appreciate that collective type of strategy. You know, one of the areas, the next areas I'll talk about is construction, and it has shown itself to be a key, a major key to invigorating the current recovery in the city. Focusing on resources that help the departments instigate better business starts and expand is something we believe that the city should do and that this council should be involved in. That'll help facilitate job creation and support new revenue for the entire community. You know, on a macro level, what Angelino's, what Angelino's need is our elected leaders to keep economic growth and job creation at top of mind. UPS has a growth plan, and that growth plan is based on segmented economic growth, healthcare, e-commerce. We put investment into growth environments, not declining environments, and we believe that this city council, by doing similar, will be able to grow jobs. Businesses provide jobs, and businesses provide opportunity for people to grow. And a strategy that's focused on growth, the growth side of the economy, particularly e-commerce, will have a positive impact on business and jobs. And the thing that we would ask for this council to do is examine its policies as it speaks to those particular sectors that are in a growth mode, that there are friendly policies that encourage posturing in L.A. County for their, for their future. And I'll turn it back over to Gary.
Every year when we have this conversation, we talk about phasing out the grocery receipts tax. Many of you who spoke to our delegation this morning spoke about the importance of that as well. You know that we have the highest grocery receipts tax of any city in L.A. County and one of the highest in the nation, and you know that this is discouraging to businesses, and in some cases, it has caused businesses to leave Los Angeles. The Business Tax Advisory Committee that you created, after years of public hearings and academic studies, recommended a three-stage plan to simplify the tax structure and lower the grocery receipts tax, with the eventual elimination in 15 years. Eliminating the grocery receipts tax will create thousands of jobs and generate more revenue through property sales and utility taxes than the current grocery receipts tax. The plan you discussed last spring, when you were talking about the budget, $45 million reduction over four years was a start, but we need to move more rapidly on this particular reduction, and we pledge to work forward, work with you during this coming year on that. All right, next, Ruben.
Our next priority is a familiar one.
Ruben, for the record, state your full name.
Ruben Gonzalez. Our next priority is a familiar one. We ask that the city and this council stay the course on LAX modernization. LAX is a $60 billion annual economic engine for our region and supports tens of thousands of direct and hundreds of thousands of indirect local jobs. The city council's vote to modernize LAX is already paying great dividends. The recent commitment of over $500 million in investments by Southwest Airlines is just a glimpse of what businesses are willing to do when they have certainty that there is a shared, long-term vision with its city partner. It is critical that the city stand firm at support of the modernization plan as we weather legal wrangling and do the important work of project-specific EIRs and the FAA planning process. We must also continue our focus on the critical construction of a light rail station at LAX. We must work to ensure that public transit to LAX is viable, practical, and an enjoyable option for air travelers. If we remain focused and committed, we will all live to see and use an LAX that's deserving of this great city. And now Noel will handle our next item.
I'm going to spend a moment and, and talk about the ports. You know, the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach bring in over 45% of this nation's goods to the U.S. economy, and UPS is obviously very, very deeply ingrained in that, and we need to ensure that the port continue to be, can continue to be competitive. I, I will tell you that there's some natural attractants to the ports that, that make it, makes sense for distribution to happen around the ports. I think that the city council and the city of L.A. should be concerned about a phenomena that UPS is very aware of, and is that if you're going to build a million square feet, it'll be outside L.A. County. Currently, I have 400,000 square feet being built outside of Ontario. It's cost, the cost of about $350 million, UPS, to grow bandwidth and capacity in the 16. Let me tell you where we're not making that investment, and where we haven't made an investment in over 20 years in new infrastructure in Los Angeles County. We need to be concerned about that. We need to be concerned about the growth engine that the, that the, that the ports create for this environment and why it's not creating similar outcomes within this county. The Panama Canal opening will provide, and I don't look at that as competition for L.A., at least UPS doesn't, we look at it as an opportunity. It is an opportunity. The port does have a distinction that it is the only port in America, Long Beach, that is, and L.A. Long Beach is the same port to me. It is the only port in America that docked a ship with over 12,000 TEUs in the last two years, the Fabiola. The world is aware of that, and they believe they have to compete effectively against it. And when Panamax rules engage, what the city council and the city of L.A., from UPS's lens, should be concerned about is ships will go to 18,000. You know, just a few years ago, 5,000 was a big deal. It's not anymore. What three ships used to do into the port of Long Beach in L.A., one ship will do. It's just a matter of time. The city council and the mayor should be looking ahead and looking forward to that phenomena, because that's what'll make this city competitive against the Panama Canal, is being able to handle an 18,000 TEU ship.
Our next priority is the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. I think all of us have a new awareness of the importance of water over the last three years during the drought, and I hope that our constituents will all vote in favor of the water bond issue that's on the ballot on November the 4th. But it is essential that our entire community rally around the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. It is essential because we have lived off of the investments made by our predecessors under the leadership of people like William Mulholland and others. We have got to continue to make those investments. There are chronic water shortages phased by the state water project and the Central Valley project that we must address. Our Metropolitan Water District and DWP have done a masterful job of preparing for the current drought, so much that you don't even know it's happening. They've done such a good job, but that will come to an end when the water finally runs out. L.A., the business community and the government community must be a major proponent of the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. Ruben, will you cover energy and housing, please?
Thank you. Our next priority is a commitment to incentive-based strategy to build more affordable and market-based housing in Los Angeles. As Chris has told us very often, one of, if not the greatest challenge to growing our economy in the region and the state is the dreadful lack of housing stock. The demise of the CRA and other tools, the cost and abuse, the costs in time that comes with abuse of SEQA, and the long planning, planning process here in the city of L.A. compared to other municipalities, make it very hard for developers to pencil out housing of any kind. As Gary stated in his opening, most of the time, we share common goals, and working together, we know we can achieve them, but in a way that cultivates business growth instead of deterring it. On the issue of housing specifically and affordable housing, we are grateful to Councilman Mitch O'Farrell for following this very model. The councilman has specifically reached out to the chamber and simply said, "I'm passionate about affordable housing. We need to do something different. How do we get there?" The result of which is a vision, his vision, vision which we support, to build an incentive-based structure for how to get more housing. This vision, coupled with reform to the planning process, and we hope true, true SEQA reform at the state level, can kickstart a renaissance in housing development in the city. Another critical part of economic development is a sound energy infrastructure strategy. That brings us to the next priority, asking the city to maintain an affordable and reliable energy supply by supporting policies that promote a portfolio approach. We are all excited about a day when more and more of our energy is produced through renewable resources, yet we have to be mindful to balance this important goal with the need for energy reliability and the understanding of the cost impact higher energy costs have on families and businesses throughout the city. We believe this city of Los Angeles must adopt and promote a portfolio approach to energy, balancing renewables with more traditional sources like natural gas, which will allow greater integration of renewable sources over time, without shocking our residents and businesses with exorbitant increases in their DWP bills or put our energy supply at risk. Now, pass it on to Noel for our next priority.
Thanks, Ruben. The final item I'd like to talk about is one that's very near and dear to me. Personally, it's really near and dear to my organization, and that is on the topic of education and workforce development. This chamber has spent more than a few moments engaged in this conversation around This chamber has spent more than a few moments engaged in this conversation around education. And we know that we have a shared goal with this council in this regard. A strong educated workforce in Los Angeles is the only thing that's going to grow the economy. Companies like UPS need employees at every level with STEM skills to be able to efficiently and effectively do the work we would give them. Employment at UPS is up. In Southern California alone, I have hired this year over 1,500 new employees. 350 of those employees received full-time, $27-plus-dollar-an-hour-paying jobs. But let me tell you what every one of those jobs has in common. To get it, you need a high school diploma. It is simply not acceptable for the city of Los Angeles to be comfortable with 50% dropout rates. And to say that we're uncomfortable with it means that it would go away. Because clearly, there's a power in this room to change that narrative. Companies like people when they buy a home, look where the best education is. I talk to companies regularly about this particular piece. The one thing I get to do differently than most of my council partners is, I meet with about 175 businesses a year, and it's not just Amazon. They're one of them. It's with Amazon, it's with Apple, it's with Costco, it's with Granger. Let me tell you what they all have in common. They need people with high school diplomas. We cannot get into a conversation around creating an economy that doesn't rely on that. When the question comes up about why businesses go to Texas, I'm just going to share the UPS thought on that. And this may not be consistent with the chamber thought, but this is the UPS thought. We have built over $450 million of infrastructure in Texas. Businesses are going there. And let me tell you the reason. If you look across all ethnic groups in the city of Austin, and I would challenge you as council members to do this. If you look at Latino, African-American, Asian, and white, and you look at 5th graders, they all rank in the top 10% of the United States of America's education group for their ethnic group. Period. If you're looking to locate a business, and you want a vision 10, 15, 20 years out, if you have smart 5th graders, you know you're okay. We need to make a different and better investment in education. We are disappointed significantly in our inability at UPS to get workers in Los Angeles that we would have to go outside the county to attract them. It's an issue, and it's not going to go away. And this chamber is engaged in it deeply with higher L.A.'s youth, cash for college, gain-reduction zones, linked learning, college-to-career pathways, and the work that David Ratray and his group has done on behalf of this city and the chamber has been amazing. It really needs an all-in approach. And any and every time we can do whatever we can to strengthen the infrastructure around that high school diploma is going to pay a big dent dividend for the city. Gary?
And our final agenda item is to support Home for Good. In late 2010, the Chamber and the United Way released Home for Good, an action plan to end chronic and veteran homelessness in Los Angeles by 2016. Since its launch, Home for Good has inspired a cooperative alliance between federal and local officials, a landmark shift, shift in the use of county resources, and the establishment of a funders collaborative to leverage public and private funds for homelessness, housing for the homeless. Thus far, Home for Good has housed 14,000 homeless, 9,000 of which are veterans. Many of you have already signed up to help us on Home for Good, and we continue to ask for your assistance. I'd like to thank Noel and Ruben for participating in our presentation of these nine priorities. And now I'd like to call on Chris Thornburg and Beacon Economics to report on the district-by-district economic report. Like to make note the fact that Tesoro was a funder of this economic report that we're going to present to you, and we appreciate very much any of you who provided some information from your particular district. Chris?
All right. Thank you very much. The council members, it's great to be here. Of course, this is my second year in a row that I've been in front of you to talk about our report. And of course, this is the fifth year in a row we've done this report. Now, before I start getting into this data, a couple of things I want to say. First of all, you might notice that I'm the only person up here without pre-written comments. This always makes Gary very nervous, I'd say at the very least. But with that aside, to sort of quote my favorite chef, "I'm just here for the data." And what we have here today is some of what I would call the most unprecedented look at the inner workings of the city of Los Angeles that you'll find really anywhere in California, dare I say, in the U.S. We are accessing a number of unique data sets, data sets that at one level have some issues with, issues we're working through. But I am so proud of this year's report, and I want to thank the chamber for providing us with the support to be able to do this with you on a regular basis. What I want to do today is, is kind of just go through this report very quickly, at a very top level, give you some of the top-level findings. Obviously, there's a tremendous amount of information in here, information you're going to need a few days to process, to say the very least. But with that, let me first tell you what the big difference here, and this, by the way, is the fifth annual report, not the third, but what the big updates we are, we're dealing with this year really are twofold. First of all, as you can tell, this report relative to last year is considerably larger. We've expanded the sections, we expanded the range of data. In particular, in direct response to some of the conversations we had last year, we have started to integrate a bunch of the, what I would call, local demographic data, everything from household income to poverty rates and rental information, so on and so forth. This data, for the record, comes from something called the American Community Survey, which is the annual long-form census that's done within various parts of the city. I will say that the data we're using today is based on the 2012 American Community Survey, which has a completely different set of census blocks relative to previous years because of data they received from the 2010 census. Next year, when we do this report yet again, we'll be better able to match the information we have to your individual council districts, and thus we'll be able to create a better chain of data to give you a sense of the relative progression. But at least for now, this is the best data you're going to have in terms of the local characteristics of your current council district. Second thing we've added in this year, and to this I have to thank Jan Perry and the Office of Economic Development, we've added in information that we are now taking from the EDD's confidential employment data. Yet again, this is cutting-edge stuff. What we are actually doing is working with the EDD, and we are getting establishment-by-establishment level information on payrolls and number of employees for every single business in the city. We just got our first data dump on this, and it was millions of records a few weeks ago. We are still processing through it, and again, it is a work in progress. But I can tell you right now that we are going to be able, over the next few years, to provide you yet again with an unprecedented level of understanding as to what's happening with the businesses in your community. And this is something, again, we're very excited about. So with that, let me get right in some of the data. First and foremost, of course, has to do with just the overall level of employment. Now, last year, employment in the city by our measures was growing a little bit faster than the county overall. I'm disappointed to report that that has slowed down a bit. Indeed, it seems as if the county right now is growing a little bit faster than the city itself, although that's not true for every industry. Some industries continue to grow faster here within the city than in other parts of the county, and you can see a breakdown of, of the different parts of the economy that are growing at this particular point in time. Putting this to one side, there's two ways of measuring employment. This data right here is based on payroll. That is to say, it's measuring jobs for people who work in the city and people, of course, importantly, who have unemployment insurance. That's why they show up on these particular records. Another way to considering this would be to look at what's called household employment. Household employment is data for people who live in the city, and they could be self-employed. They aren't necessarily people who just work for a company and receive unemployment insurance. Here, the data is considerably better, and here, quite the opposite, it flips things around. You find that there's actually 3.3% more people employed who live in the city today relative to last year, and that's greater than the growth we're seeing in the balance of the county. So while maybe the jobs aren't forming here, clearly Angelenos are starting to get back to work, and indeed, that increase in the number of jobs and the income they're making is giving a nice boost to the overall economy, and you'll see that in many of the numbers I provide, which show how this growth is occurring across the board. I should also point out that today, in the city of, last year, excuse me, the unemployment rate in the city was about 10.7%. That's down 1.4 percentage points from the year before, a very substantial job, drop. And of course, yet again, talking about the overall ability for the city to continue to succeed. Incomes are also rising after being flat for a number of years. Overall income per capita has really started to rise nicely in 2013. And on the right-hand side there, and giving you kind of a breakdown of what's been happening in both in terms of personal income as well as household income. It absolutely is the case that incomes in Los Angeles are lower than in much of the state or in much of the rest of the region. A lot of that has to do with the demographics of our city, where there's a large number of people who have less than a college degree. I go, go back to many of the points that Noel was making about the importance of education and what that means for the future of our economy. I could not echo, echo those sentiments any better to, to make that point. And to that end, we can also talk a little bit about housing. Some of the best news for me, of course, that we are starting to see an increase in housing permits in the city. Now, they're still quite low from where they were, say, back in 2005 during the peak of the housing bubble, but things are trending in the right direction. And as Ruben pointed out, one of my pet peeves about California is our utter lack of housing. One of the most significant challenges we face as an economy, as a, as a, as a, as a community, has to do with the fact that we just don't simply have enough housing relative to our population base. And I have some basic statistics here to give you some sense of what we're dealing with. To give you a sense of this, overall in the U.S., 42% of all renters pay 35% or more of their income to support their current rent. Here in Los Angeles, it's 52%, significantly higher. Think of the drain that puts on families and the stress it puts on those particular households. But even more significantly, it's not just renters, it's also homeowners. For the nation overall, your average homeowner uses 24% of their income to pay for that house. Here in Los Angeles, it's 41%. It's an enormous burden, and the easiest solution is supply. Whether it's affordable or not, when you add more houses to the stock, you increase supply, prices will eventually come down. So we need to make sure those permits continue to rise at a very solid basis. As for non-residential, yet again, good news to support. Overall, across the county, there's been very significant increases in the number of, and value of non-residential permits. Building is coming back to Los Angeles. Now, again, we're nowhere near where we were in 2005, but the trends are wonderful. For the county overall, non-residential permits jumped almost 70% from the last year relative to the previous year. Here in the city, up 33%. Again, very strong numbers to say the very least, and it means, of course, yet again, people are coming back to build, to add to our economy, and we want to see continuations of this trend and working to make sure that this is done easier and quicker and faster. Very good thing. Now, as for some of the more local statistics, that is to say, council district by council district, again, do keep in mind that a lot of this data is built on, on data sets that we're still working our way through. But nevertheless, we're just so happy, again, with some of the picture, we can get what's going on. If you want to talk about which districts have the most jobs to the least jobs, not too surprising, District 14, 5, 11, and 12, by far and away, represent, and 3, represent the bulk of, of the jobs in the city at this particular point in time, given that they are centered around some of those very important job characteristics. Also interesting is the average wage earned in these various districts. You can see, for example, in District 5, the average wage of a worker is almost $80,000. Compare that to some of the other districts, 8 and 10, for example, where the pay happens to run less than 40, in some cases, $25,000. But with that in mind, I'm also pleased to report that some of the job growth that is occurring, some of the faster job growth are actually in those less, shall we say, job-oriented parts. For example, District, pardon me, 8 saw the greatest job growth from 2012 to 2013 of 4.2%. District number 2 at 3.5%, District 5 at 2.2%. And we broke down some of the top sectors that are driving that growth forward. Education and health and retail trade, of course, pushing 8 forward, and in District 1, admin, support, and education, health also pushing things forward. And of course, wholesale trade and transportation in District 5. Good news there as well, to say the very least. Oh, I should also point out that the one sector that saw, saw, actually, jobs contract over the course of the last year was actually District 11 on the west side. The reason for that negative number, by the way, has to do with two facts. There's been a pullback in some of the jobs in the entertainment industry, but more significantly, because of the end of the construction project at LAX having to do with the new, wonderful new international terminal we have, those jobs left that area, and that pushed the construction jobs fairly sharply there. But I can think we can all agree that, given the, the fundamental core of the job base in that part of town, we don't have to worry too much about the west side, say the very least. Yeah. As, as for the grocery receipts tax, yet again, very solid numbers across the board. Really, growth rates anywhere between 2% and 12% depending on what district you're looking at. Obviously, with the revenues flowing in, gives a little bit of a cushion to the city. Hopefully, we can invest in roads again and get some of that money in there. But to this end, we also have some of the top sectors for grocery receipts tax growth in, in various parts of the city as well. You can see professional services and finance and insurance in particular have adding a lot to the overall grocery receipts tax. These high-skilled companies are really blooming in the current economic environment we're here, both globally as well inside the United States. As for sales tax receipts, a bit of a broad mix. Only one big negative here, and that has to do with District 1, in the downtown district. There was a relatively sharp drop in taxable sales, but that has to do with some blip that we haven't fully figured out, because the previous year, overall taxable sales grew on something on the order of 25%. So there's something in the data that we're trying to figure out right now. Ultimately, if you look at the broad trends across the different regions, taxable sales, driven, of course, by consumer spending, continue to grow at a fairly solid basis. As for residential construction permits, going back to what we were just talking about, again, you can see some districts are far ahead. 11, 14, 5, and 4 have all seen some of the greatest increases in new permits. A lot of that in the multifamily space, which is just an important element of the densification the city needs to go through to really support ongoing growth into the region. I would also point out there are a number of districts that haven't seen a lot of growth in overall housing permits, and I would look at those districts as potential places that you ought to consider pushing more development. Obviously, we're not getting a lot of, of new permits in 15, 8, and 3. Those, to me, represent opportunities, opportunities to really continue to grow housing in this city of Los Angeles. Build it, and they will come in many ways, and I think that can support the ongoing growth in the city as well. On the non-residential side, again, a bit of a mixed bag. These numbers do bounce around a lot because it's what we call lumpy data. A large permit pulled one year, for example, for the Korean Air Tower, can push things around quite dramatically. But nevertheless, the numbers are pretty good across the board. Some of the greatest increases in overall, some of the greatest new permits being pulled, 14, 13, 11, and 4 have seen very solid numbers in terms of new permits being put into place. And what's interesting is we're moving away from just fixing up existing structures. We're now seeing more and more demand for what I call very specialty structures in the office and retail space, despite the fact that overall vacancy rates are still relatively high. And that's why you see, for example, retail office finally starting to show up in terms of some of the big permits that are being pulled right now. There are definite needs for very specific product, and builders are out there building them. Great news, to say the least, for, for the city overall. Last but not least, we do have some demographic data in here in terms of both household income in these different areas, as well as the percent of folks with, with or without a bachelor degree at this particular point in time. Very high correlation between these two numbers here. One of the things that Los Angeles does deal with is, again, a very large share of low-skill workers in the area, people we have to care about and think about as society, make sure that these folks can get ahead. But even more importantly, we have to make sure that their kids have the opportunity to finish high school and get on and get into college. Ultimately, that will be the best long-term success strategy for the city, to say the very least. So that's it. That's the kind of the top-level overview of what the numbers. As I said, if you look in this report, you'll find thousands and thousands of numbers. I would encourage you to reach out to the chamber, to reach out to us if there's questions on this data. And again, I want to thank Gary for his support of this ongoing effort. We hope you approve of, appreciate this data, and I look forward to talking about it with you in the next couple of years.
Professor, that was very good data there. You did it. I haven't heard that in many, many years. Thank you. We have some members who have some questions. Mr. Coretts from the 5th District in the number-one position in so many categories.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that introduction. And I think we may have played a little bit of a role in, in rising to number one in sales tax because we pushed to reestablish a number of bids or to improve them, and I think our historic shopping districts have helped actually drive some of that. I only had one thing I wanted to at least give you some, some food for thought about, which is the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. Because I have mixed feelings about it. I think we need more analysis. I'm not ready to get behind it, and I don't think any of our Metropolitan Water District board members are formally in support yet. Part of the concern is that, at best, it'll allow us to have the same amount of water we get now, rather than actually increasing the amount of water. It gives us a little more certainty, but it doesn't improve the numbers, even at best, talking with the governor's people. I think that the more certain- I think that the more certain approach is to do everything we can in terms of local water supplies, clean our aquifers, do much, much more on stormwater, do much more on recycled water. Israel uses almost all of its recycled water. We use, I believe, still less than 10%. There's a lot more we can do in conservation. There are a lot of other technologies. And I really think that's where we should be looking at investing. I have real big questions about whether we get much out of the BDCP. And part of that is, I think, the main purpose of that project is to get water to the Central Valley, which I'm concerned about farmers, but I don't think we should be paying the tab for them, and I'm not sure they can afford to pay their share in the final analysis, is to get water to those that are doing fracking in Kern County. I'm not so sure that it's actually critical for Los Angeles. So I think a lot more analysis needs to be done. I think we can do it without the water project. I think we just need to focus on our local water supplies. So I'm at least skeptical, and I think we need to do a lot more analysis before LA is ready to support the BDCP.
Well, thank you, Mr. Coretts, on that. I have a difference of opinion, but I'm not up yet. But I want to call the cards right now from the chamber members, a variety of folks. Chris Martin, who spoke earlier, Chris? Chris had an assignment to do, so we thank you, Chris. Gil Ivy for the Metropolitan Water District. Gil, good to see you. I think a little more like Gil, but I love Paul, too.
Thank you, Mr. Council President and Council Members. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. And giving deference to Councilman Coretts, who is on the Metropolitan District Board. He is one of 37 members on that board, and it is an issue that has been analyzed and analyzed and analyzed. And we are proud to be a part of the business community who has galvanized itself around the issue of water. It's been an issue that has escaped the business community for many, many years. And so, being in this business for 44 years, I can tell you that through the wet years and through the dry years, and now through a very unprecedented period of time in our weather, it's very important that we all concentrate on the issue of a portfolio of ways in which we can take care of the delta, take care of the water issues for Southern California and the state, and to make sure that we are actively practicing conservation and everything else that's involved. And the issue, on the issue of groundwater and recycling and all the programs that the councilman mentioned, all of those are part of the portfolio of the BDCP going forward. All the things that are necessary to go forward to sustain the foundation of life in the city and the economic growth that we portend is necessary because of the fact that we have a supply of water. But going forward, we need to secure that supply, and we thank the chambers for their support. We thank this council for its continued support and interest in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Gil. Joe, Zizak, Joe, come on up from Mercury Air. Sizik.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Labange. Thank you for taking the time, as you do annually, to partner with the business community and to listen to some of the issues and some of the areas that we need your strongest support in. I'm here to talk about LAX modernization. Mr. Gonzalez spoke about it a few minutes ago, and I'm a member of that community at the airport, have been there for many, many years. We're starting to see, finally, business coming back to the city. Yes, there is a gap in unemployment we haven't caught up since 2008. But one of the impetuses, one of the necessities of a modern airport is its ability to bring business, its ability to allow people to travel and conduct business and visit and come to Southern California as well, which has historically been a tourist mecca. We serve 60 million visitors and residents of Southern California, as well as more than 17 million annual international passengers that use LAX as their gateway to and from the United States. How many businesses do you think that supports? How many businesses can boast 60 million people coming back and forth? A small percentage of that, a drop in a percentage of that, has a ripple effect on our economy. We create almost 300,000 jobs, generating $39 billion into our economy. The City Council took the right step a year ago and a year and a half ago to modernize LAX and improve the plan to bring it into the 21st century. Let's not go backwards. I ask that you simply stay the course, hold strong despite opposition and the legal process, keep to the vision of an LAX we all deserve as we complete FAA approval and the planning of specific projects within the overall modernization plan.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that very much. Danita Willoughby from the Southern California Gas Company.
Good morning, members of council. I'm Danita Willoughby with Southern California Gas Company, and I'm also co-chair of the Chamber's Education and Workforce Council. The success of our city depends upon the success of our schools and the quality of our workforce. And you should all know that Los Angeles is involved with the LA Compact, which is a collaboration among LA leaders from the education, business, civic, nonlabor, I mean, labor and nonprofit communities. And the Compact will achieve efforts to help us transform the educational outcomes for our young people. The business community is committed to helping strengthen and support the region's cradle-to-career systems that will increase our region's economic vitality. We're also very excited about the collaboration opportunities that allow us to prepare our youth for 21st century skills. The Career Pathways Program calls for businesses and schools to partner that, to partner so we can develop internships and jobs for our students. And you should all know that the program recently received a second round of funding for $250 million. I'll now hand it over to my colleague, friend, and co-chair of the Chamber's Education and Workforce Council, Dean Leavenworth.
Real quick, Dean. Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'm Dean Leavenworth with Time Warner Cable and the co-chair of the Education and Workforce Council. We want to thank you and congratulate you and the mayor for your support at Higher LA and for reaching 10,000 jobs for youth. We're privileged to work with you on that. We are committed to strengthen the region's cradle-to-career focus by supporting the early learning and linked learning in college and career pathways. And we look to ensure the economic competitiveness of the Los Angeles region by expanding demand-driven workforce initiatives, sector intermediaries to create pathways to high-demand, high-growth industries and sustainable careers. Additionally, the Chamber is proud to support Proposition 47 to help California break the cycle of crime, increase public safety, decrease prison spending. And with the passage of WIOA, which is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which is a huge win, we now have a new opportunity to work with the City Council, the mayor, and regional systemic partners to build on our previous efforts to strengthen the region's workforce development. And finally, the Cash for College Campaign led by the city has served more than 220,000 students and secured more than $45 million in financial aid. As the next year is ahead of us, we look forward to working with you as key partners and supporting your efforts. Thank you.
Phil Tate. Thank you, Dean. Put the Dodgers on all the time now that they're in the playoffs, Dean.
Hi, good morning. My name is Philip Tate. I'm the vice president of development and government affairs for Kilroy Realty. We're a publicly traded REIT founded in Los Angeles approximately 60 years ago, and our headquarters are at Bundy and Olympic. We have 13.1 million square feet of office throughout California and the state of Washington, with another 6.2 million in development. We remain bullish on Los Angeles, especially in the Hollywood area. We've recently invested hundreds of millions of dollars because we see the future is there. If the city wants to continue to build office space necessary to attract quality tenants, such as the tenants that we provide headquarters for, LinkedIn, Dropbox, Salesforce, DirecTV, then it needs to continue, and it wants to continue, to grow its housing stock across all income levels. It needs to make the planning process more streamlined and predictable. The way to do that is to provide the planning department with the funding it needs to do the planning necessary to allow zoning-compliant projects to proceed without unnecessary delays. The city of San Francisco has done this, and it is paying dividends for them. Finally, in seeking to expand the affordable housing stock, a goal we all support, I would urge you to focus on incentives. If a project doesn't get built, it won't add any new units to the affordable housing stock. But a well-thought-out incentive system can help to achieve the goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. Michael Delatorre.
Good morning, Honorable Council President and City Council Members. My name is Michael Delatorre, the governmental affairs manager for the Southern California Gas Company. As LA Chamber members know all too well, California is a tough place to do business. Being an investor-owned utility is no exception. Throughout most of the United States, natural gas is recognized as cleaner and more efficient solution for meeting our energy needs. Our state's political climate, regulations, and laws present challenges for our business. Unlike some companies, we can't leave the state. Our pipes are in the ground, and we're here to stay, and that's the way we want it to be. We're part of the communities we serve. Our employees are active members of the communities where they live and work. We want to help make California and Los Angeles a better, and as you know, natural gas can help do that. Natural gas has an important role in our country's future. This clean, burning, abundant, low-priced energy source is helping spur new technology, support the growth of renewable energy, and help clean our environment. In addition, the discovery of new natural gas supplies is making the U.S. more energy-dependent and helping to create new jobs. Right now, we're looking at ways we can help make our customers' lives better, and one way is to explore how natural gas can be used in transportation, at our ports, and in the development of biogas, fuel cells, and energy storage out of California and the rest of the country, meet our challenging environmental needs. And the challenge it will be, air quality, emissions requirements, regulation, and policy, aging employees, and future workforce development are just some of the obstacles we face. Now, with that all being said, I'm still going to stand here and tell you that the outlook is good, that it's because the future for natural gas is bright, for our SoCal gas. This is such an exciting time to be part of the utility and natural gas industry. On behalf of SoCal Gas, we look forward to working with the LA Chamber, the city of Los Angeles, to help identify solutions that provide reliable, affordable energy that is critical to the overall economic growth and well-being of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. We have two more cards and public comment. The chamber would stay there at the table. Juan Icaula.
I am very glad that the chamber is here, Chamber of Commerce, because I've been telling you for a long time, I wrote a book in 2008 where we actually become smart enough to finance each other housing, and we keep, we stop talking about all this BS, affordable housing. There's no damn affordable housing in Los Angeles, and there will not be any while the powers of greed are working. And the powers of greed are here. And in real estate, there is no way to stop the landlords from increasing the rents, increasing everything, the water and power, everybody, so impoverishing the whole area. And I know you're concerned with the ports and the airport and all that, but the homeless are going to be more and more every day, because renting a damn little apartment does not end homelessness. What ends homelessness is changing the laws of real estate so everybody has a little place to live first. A human right to have a little place to live, instead of all this bullshit about, "We're going to build more affordable housing." How in the hell are you going to build affordable housing if the land is what costs the money? Where are you going to build it? In the ocean? Are you stupid, or are we stupid? I am a homeless son of a bitch.
Hey, all right. So direct your comments to me and finish your comments, please.
You are a homeless son of a bitch.
All right. Sean Murphy, please, Sean Murphy. Okay, that completes public comment at this time. We have some members who want to speak. For the public listening on Channel 35, there's a federal court ruling that allows people to use any kind of language they want. So that was the choice of that speaker. Mr. Buscagno with the 15th District.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the chamber and all of the representatives here representing our business community for putting up, showing some presence here at City Hall. It means a lot to this council. Mr. Chairman, you made a good point about the Port of Los Angeles and the potential growth that we're going to see in the near future with the TEU count rising to 14,000 to 16,000 TEU ships coming through our port. And my recent meeting with Gene Soroka, he highlighted that important fact, that the ships are coming. And the fact that Mr. Soroka has that industry knowledge, we're just blessed to have him leading the port in that direction. The port has come a long way, not only with growing the port, growing it green, improving the environment, reducing the emissions. We just need to now look at further green growth, as we're calling it, the Port of Los Angeles. And it impacts my family because they're all dock workers. So thanks for that. My question maybe to Mr. Thornburg, can help me analyze this. We always say, down at the water, prosperity begins at the waterline, truly begins at the waterfront. But we're finding in San Pedro and Wilmington, the closer you get to the waterline, the property values depreciate. Can you explain why that's happening?
No. You know, it's a big question. When you think about the San Pedro area, especially when you think about the affluence just a little bit west of there, in the Palaverdi Peninsula, what is it going to take to get San Pedro, shall we say, up and running to the next level? Clearly, if I look across the city of Los Angeles and say, where could the next big hotspot in terms of growth be, that's an obvious spot. It's a beautiful place. Part of it certainly has to be traffic issues. I think we understand that the problem's getting in and out of that particular region. But more significantly, one of the big questions is, is how receptive, how open is the area to densification, to rebuilding? More often than not, a lot of times, these neighborhoods, you'd find these neighborhood councils, for example, just fight tooth and nail against any kind of change, any kind of development, when those assets are just so valuable, can be used efficiently if you can get these projects for sure.
Well put. And I'm glad you said that. Because the harbor area is open for business when it comes to retail, commercial, residential development. And it's long overdue. We've been struggling for decades in bringing that retail, commercial, residential component along our waterline. And let me make that clear. And with transportation, let's bring the light rail down to the harbor, which is long overdue. Why not? It's been a failure in leadership, and that's why we're struggling down there. And just know, our leadership, and as I told your group earlier, we're leading with a sense of urgency on the 15th District. And of course, the need for waterfront redevelopment, long overdue. Even in talking to Mr. Chairman and bringing UPS down there, we have in Harbor City, Harbor Gateway, industrial parks that are sitting vacant. In downtown San Pedro, Topaz, it's a commercial building, high vacancy rate, right on the waterline. And the recent news of having, bringing Altisie down to the waterfront, bringing Academia down to help spur economic growth is something that we're continuing to support and celebrate. And there's a lot of work to be done on that front. If I can direct your attention to page 71, specifically with CD 15, the gross receipts in the top eight sectors, my question is, bottom right, the highest-performing category in this section is unknown, which is kind of alarming to me. What does that mean?
When we work with the city finance department to collect this data, well, I mean, they classify the industries. They have to pull the data for us. Basically, they provide us with addresses. We provide them with the geo-coding of those addresses, and then they give it back to us. And unfortunately, a large chunk of the data comes back as unknown. Now, you'd have to ask the finance department what that means exactly.
Something we may have to retool some things around here.
Yeah. Well, and fortunately, you know, it's like anything out there. When you get into the guts of the data, it's never as clean as you'd like. But again, it's the best we have, and we will continue to work with the Department of Finance and hopefully be able to clean that up for you.
Appreciate that. And secondly, if you look at the gross receipts... And secondly, if you look at the gross receipts tax increasing twice the rate as shown in this demo, in this graphic here, but the sales tax remains flat, can you explain why that occurred?
Well, again, off the top, no, because again, when you think about taxable sales, that data is highly confidential, and then actually, that data has to be collected for us through a third-party contractor. I'm thinking probably HDL, because I believe they work with the city on that, so they would have the best information on that.
Very good.
You know, in, in many ways, if I may, you know, I, I know there's lots of questions about what this data means and what's driving that, and I'd love to be able to tell you, I can explain everything underlying this. From our perspective, just collecting this data, getting in front of you, giving you a sense of what's happening in the district, is designed to get you to start asking questions. That's a huge question, and the first place you start is with those contracts, with the HDL. Hey, why is this happening here? What businesses are doing it? I, I hope what this report brings to you is the idea that there are answers out there, you just gotta turn over the right rock to get them.
Well, thanks again, and I look forward to continuing to partner with the Chamber, especially in light of what's happening in Watts, a billion dollars investment in Jordan Downs, bringing for the first time in decades, retail, commercial space with the expansion of the Century Boulevard, and also with waterfront redevelopment in both in San Pedro and also in Wilmington. It's long overdue, it's our turn, it's our time, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Buscagno for the port, which drives the economics, that's how you opened up your comments. Another driver is the great 11th District, Mr. Bonin in the LAX.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and thanks to the Chamber for the presentation today, to Beacon for all the, the hard and, and good work in this. I, I want to thank the, the Chamber, not just for this, but for the work that we've done in partnership on transportation, on homelessness, on technology. I think we have a strong and good partnership with the Chamber in Los Angeles. I wanted to, to rise to make a couple of points and ask a couple of questions. I just wanted to stress, in case people mishear it, about LAX, that modernization of LAX is robust, is happening now, is moving forward, and is not at risk. We are doing more now to modernize LAX than we ever have. We just finished the Bradley Terminal, we just did the groundbreaking on Southwest the other day, we are building the connection to LAX in the airport by the end of this year, we'll have made their preferred selection for an automated people mover. That is big, big progress, which I'm proud of and I, and I hope we celebrate. I noted the comments about development and about the need to build more housing, and I agree with them. I don't necessarily agree that it all needs to be built in the 11th District, although if you look at these numbers here, most of it is. For as much as people scream about West Side NIMBYs, there is a hell of a lot of development happening in the 11th District, both residential and non-residential. And I would submit that the battles over development are not because people don't want things in their backyard, it's that we don't plan in Los Angeles. We do not do planning here. Everything that comes before us is spot zoning, is somebody playing the roulette, roulette wheel on a development. They bought a piece of property and they don't want to develop it for what it's zoned for, or what it's set out for. And I think the, the, the best and easiest fix for that, as the 2020 Commission pointed out, is that we fix our community plans and we update them. Now, that's not gonna happen anytime soon here, because that's millions of dollars that wouldn't be spent on the transportation improvements that you want, or on the public safety investments that you want. So one of my questions is, I'm wondering if the Chamber can help us in the way it has with Home for Good, in trying to get developers, philanthropists, companies here in Los Angeles to raise money so that we can update our community plans and move past some of these battlefield skirmishes?
I think developers have indicated over the years that they pay whatever fees that city charges, because they hope that the money from those fees goes back into those departments and to planning for the future. You are right, there's lots of spot zoning, but when the land was last zoned 50 years ago, there needs to be some spot zoning. So, yes, let's talk about how we could get those neighborhood plans done sooner, because they are a major problem. When you buy a piece of property in New York City, you know what you can build on it, and you can get started, and that just is not the case here.
I, I would love to work together with the business community, philanthropists, to, to make sure that we can collectively raise the money to update our community plans. The final thing I wanted to say is, I appreciated the, the nine points, except for maybe seven words in the LAX bullet, I, I substantially agreed with it. But I actually, I'd like to add a tenth. I would submit that I think a tenth thing we need to do is we need to tell our story better. That we need to tell the story of Los Angeles better, all of us. Too often, the focus in tomorrow's news coverage or tonight's television coverage is gonna be how bad Los Angeles is for business, and all the things we need to do. And we do need to do a damn better job than we're doing, and I think this council is committed to it. But we also need to, and I think, I, I would call upon the, the Chamber as well, and the business community, to help us celebrate Los Angeles. You know, if people ask me, "Why should you do business in Los Angeles?", I talk about our great intellectual capital with Caltech and USC and UCLA. I talk about a growing VC culture here where more people are investing in Los Angeles. I talk about this being the hub of creativity and innovation and technology. I talk about us being the, the city in the country that is making the most substantial investment in public transportation. And there's so many good things to say about Los Angeles. I, I, I don't mean this as sort of a, a political getcha thing, I, this is a genuine question, is, when folks come to the, the Chamber and are thinking of locating in Los Angeles, how, how, how do you pitch them on Los Angeles? Because I'd like to be able to tell the story the way you tell it as well.
Well, what we tell them is not necessarily what we tell you when we come in here to visit with you.
The, the cameras are watching, so this is what I want them to hear.
I know that. And we point out the number of jobs, the manufacturing jobs, the entertainment jobs, the port jobs, the quality of our technology companies that are growing and expanding, and we, we talk a little about the weather, but not very much about the weather, because everybody understands that. But the important thing is, we would like to be able to talk about how fast you can get things done at City Hall. And that would really help us, and, and we'd love to work with you on that, because it doesn't make any difference what I tell them. If they go to a friend who's in business, and that friend said, "Well, I had an expansion project, and I started on it three years ago, and I'm still on it", we, that's what we have to work on it.
I'll, I'll work with, oh, Noel, did you have a answer?
I, I would ask that question of, of the council, quite frankly, in that I would say, if you look at business in the last 15 years, if you look at what segments of it have grown the most, and if you look at why, where your sector of that is, and do you look that way? So, the thing that's been, I've been responsible for pieces of Southern California since '05. We had three business units here, and in 2010, we made it two, and today it sits at one. And, and so it's one synergy, Southern California for us now, right? But, but let me tell you the question I would ask, if I was in your circumstance as a council member. I would ask, why has the fastest-growing segment of the U.S. economy, which is e-commerce, it's over a trillion dollars today? We know that by 2020, it's gonna break about $2 trillion, UPS. We know that over the next 20 years, as the world goes from $7 billion to $9 billion, that job growth in this country will be export-based. We, we know that infrastructure needs to look that way. But I would ask why the ground zero of e-commerce in America, the Silicon Valley of e-commerce in the United States, why did it decide to move down the street from you? I would ask that. I would ask, why does the Asian community, which is the largest dense, density of job growth in Southern California, why did it decide to go, go east of you, in the Irwindale and industry? And, and then I would, and, and I would tactically shift the narrative so that it would attract that business. And that's the only relevant comment. And, and I think that focus groups with that group would reveal some things that I know inherently, but I think you have to see for yourself, because here's what doesn't make sense, Councilman. You're next to the port. If I take a container off a ship and I'm in Los Angeles, it's faster than going to the IE. So realize that when companies decide to not be here, they're taking a punitive stance because they're going 20, 25 miles, and time is money. But I would ask that.
Very good, Mr. Bonin.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna close, I just want to say, I will pledge to work with you on the things that you've identified, if you let me work with you on that pitch, because we really need to do a better job talking about why, if you move here, you can fall in love with Los Angeles. I agree with the things you've outlined, that we need to improve Los Angeles, but we need to be able to articulate why this is an amazing city. And let's tell that story together.
Very good, Noel. Mr. Kocorian of the 2nd District.
Thank you very much.
We're looking for Ed Sullivan's statue, too.
We're, we're gonna get it back, we're gonna find it. Thank you, Mr. President, very much. And I just want to, once again, thank the Chamber and the always excellent Christopher Thornburg for yet another really important report. I love these reports. I keep them every year, and I study them, and really get into the, the weeds on these, because this is exceptionally valuable data for us in trying to make policy to make this a, a better business environment in Los Angeles. And your list of priorities, once again, an excellent and important list of things that we need to be spending our attention on in trying to attract more business and create more jobs here. The takeaway, though, that I have from this report, to Mr. Bonin's point, which I couldn't agree with more, is that this report is chock-full of great news. Great news about Los Angeles. And, you know, at a time when we're still hearing from the blogosphere and all about the sky is falling in Los Angeles, and we have the 2020 Commission making their, you know, snide comments and all, just look at the report that's before us today, that indicates that since 2009, gross receipts in the city are up 29% for business. Since 2009, sales tax are up 26%. Since 2011, just in the last two years, commercial building, the value of commercial building permits is up 250%. That is a phenomenal showing of success. Tourism, through the roof, LAX passenger counts, the highest they've been in years. So there are a lot of great, great things going on in the business community in Los Angeles and in our economy, and there is a lot of good news ahead. So I hope that, again, to Mr. Bonin's excellent point, that the Chamber will, will join us in taking on the role that it has always had historically, in helping to build the Los Angeles that we know now by telling this story, and by changing the rhetoric away from gloom and doom, and talk about how this is a business-friendly place that still has work to do, but it is a place that money can be made, money is being made, businesses are flourishing. You know, I don't know if I have time to get into my specific points about the business tax, but I, I want to a little bit today, and of course I will, as I have with all of you many times again, but if you look at the business, number of business tax accounts that this city has had since 1996, you will see that there has never been one single year since 1996 that we have had a net loss in businesses. Not one single year. So while we're talking about businesses fleeing and all this, there hasn't been one single year in the last almost 20 where we've had a net decline in the number of businesses. And the businesses that we have here, 40% of them are entirely exempt from business tax. 40% of the businesses that we have here. So I, I think that, Mr. Tobin, you listed some really important things that we need to be working on. Updating our community and our neighborhood plans, making planning and DWP and building and safety much more customer-friendly, relieving businesses of much of the regulatory burden that they have to face, making it easy for somebody who comes here from out of state to get things done. That's what this city needs to do. But I would submit to you that we will not be able to do that if we take away 10% of our general fund, which is now devoted to the gross receipts tax. So I, I'm looking forward to working with you on trying to find ways to reduce that burden on business, and to target it towards economic development and jobs creation and investment. I'm looking forward to doing that. But we just have to get away from this canard that businesses are fleeing the city because of the gross receipts tax. It isn't true, and we, the more we spend time focusing on how we can fix the city and the things that we need to get done in the city, the better off we are. And so with that, Mr. President, Mr. Thornburg, if I could just ask you just one question, then I can follow up more on the details of this. Does anything in this report, does any of the data in this report support the notion that businesses are leaving the city of Los Angeles for elsewhere in the county of Los Angeles because of the gross receipts tax?
I would argue that the gross receipts tax is, at many levels, not a, a wise tax, you know, how it's set up, and, and some of the issues my company's had.
Granted, I think everybody would agree with that.
Yeah, so, and I think it is also true that, that obviously some businesses are more impacted than others. But it is, it is hard to track specifics on that particular front. But, you know, to that end, and both the comments, both you're making as well, Mike, I agree. Like, I, I'm not from Southern California, but I've been out for 20 years, and I'm the biggest fan in the world, and I love this place. And candidly, look around, you know, I've traveled, I love to travel, been to wonderful places, and I, how many times I've looked out the window of the car I'm in, and this place is amazing, looks just like home. Success is ours to lose, not to win. We don't have to chase it. And ultimately, for all these signs of success, my feeling is, we could be more successful. And we could create a degree of success that raises everybody, because we know we still have substantial poverty issues. Some people in this town are doing great, and others are way behind the curve. And I think that at one level or another, the harder we work to make things even better than they currently are, the better off we all, all will be. And I think that's really the purpose of, of this conversation today.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the great work that you do. Questions not, the answer's not responsive to my question, but I do appreciate, but I do very much appreciate the, the comments, and I agree with all of them. And so, since I'm no doubt out of time by now, I, I would just ask, and this can be a follow-up, we don't need to do it now, but in order to work on tax reform that benefits businesses, creates economic activity, and stimulates jobs growth, which is something I am very committed to doing, and I want to work with you to do this, in order to do that, I would like to, for somebody, and I've been unable to, to dig this up myself despite months and months and months of effort, so if the Chamber, if you, Mr. Thornburg, if others, can provide me with the specific list of businesses that have left Los Angeles to go someplace else in Los Angeles County because of the gross receipts tax, that will help us, I think, to Mr. Massey's point earlier, to, to try to brainstorm, how do we target that group? How do we target the industries that we want, that are sensitive to the gross receipts tax? The industries that are, that produce jobs, that produce sales tax revenue, but are mobile and are sensitive to the gross receipts tax? Because not all are. As I say, 40% of our businesses don't pay a penny of gross receipts tax. You know, there are many others that are dependent upon being in a particular location, and so gross receipts tax is irrelevant to their decision-making, because they can pass on the cost of that to, to their competition. A, a gas station, or a, you know, dry cleaner doesn't care about the gross receipts tax, they're not gonna relocate.
Wrap, wrap it up.
So if we can identify those industries and those businesses that are sensitive to the gross receipts tax, and produce gross, produce sales tax and other tax revenues, and create jobs, that's what we need to be focusing our tax relief efforts on, targeting those specific sectors of our industry. So I, I would implore you to work with me to try to develop those policies.
Okay, Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange, quickly, and then Mr. Price to close.
I just want to say thank you, I look forward to working, Noel, I want to work with you on industrial arts at L.A. Unified Schools. Thank you very much, all of you.
Mr. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just thank the Chamber for its, for its presence today and in our city. Certainly provide a source of energy and inspiration, individually and, and your membership. And I too look forward to working with you. There were a number of points that are going to be ripe for collaboration. I certainly support the reduction in gross receipts tax, as we all do, the need for more housing, more affordable housing, more special needs housing, and the need to spread that around. We don't just want that in, in, in certain areas. I certainly support Prop 47 and pleased to know that you are going to be moving in that direction. You know, we gotta, we gotta support large businesses and we gotta support small businesses and micro businesses. And so I just look forward to collaborating with you as we develop the kind of policies and programs that are going to permit us to do that. We all want, you know, the city to move forward. There's some exciting things happening in, in pockets of the city. We want that to just spread out, you know, especially in those areas that are underserved and have been here to fore neglected for, for a number of reasons. But appreciate the, the comments, appreciate the collaboration. You know, I was pleasantly surprised to see this $40,000 figure for the average member wage in the ninth. I don't know how we got to that, but I certainly want to find out and increase it. And so we want to continue working with you to make that happen.
Obviously, if there's more information you'd like, just reach out to Gary or myself and we'd be happy to, to dig into it a little deeper for you.
Okay, thank you. To Noel and, and Gary and Chris and, and Ruben, thank you for coordinating all of this. I hope that you view today as a successful day and we still have a lot of work to do. But thank you so, so very much for coming in. And without objection, we will note and file that report. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, members, just briefly, you may have paid attention that a few minutes ago, the doors opened and a river of red entered our council chambers. I want to, with pride, present to you one of the most phenomenal African, no, phenomenal sororities, period, in the world, and that's Delta Sigma Theta. Could we give them all a round of applause? There are all the ladies in red. Sergeant, and please have a conversation with him. I do not want to have to ask him to leave. Okay, now, with that said, okay, Johnson, let's, let me, let me, if he says something again, show him the door. We are happy and proud to have all of you with us today on your Delta days where basically you're coming up with ways to try to help our community. It's my understanding that today's focus is on voter turnout and, and things of that nature, which I personally and Mr. Labange and Mr. Weezer have been spending a lot of time working on with various discussions, how to increase that. So we are glad that you were able to kind of sneak away from the county of Los Angeles so that you could spend a few quality, quality moments with us. And I'm going to ask for Mr. Price to begin to head to the center aisle where he will present you with a, a welcoming gift from the, the city of LA. And before Mr. Price gets started, I do have to mention that my wife is a Delta. She's in the first row. Fabian Wesson. That guarantees me a place to sleep in my own house. So with that said, Mr. Price, to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, again. We are honored to be joined today. Yes, ladies, if you can come behind me.
Please, as many of you can, center, center around, Karen and Jackie. My former landlord, Jackie Dupont Walker. So may I thought I saw.
As the ladies join me, let me just say that the sorority is well-known around, certainly across our city, country and world. It has a hundred, a thousand collegiate NLMI chapters located all over the nation and abroad, in places like England, Germany, France, the Bahamas, Jamaica, et cetera. Everywhere the organization is, it provides the kind of leadership, the kind of positive direction, not just for its members, not just for women, but for the community. And so we're just so honored to salute Delta Sigma Theta today in their City Hall visit. And I've got a, a commendation, Mr. President, signed by all members of the council. It reads, "In recognition of over 100 years of exceptional community achievements and dedication to developing a secure, positive and educationally enriched environment for our youth to cultivate positive life goals, to foster a more optimistic approach to life and it can have an opportunity to reach, so that people can have reached all of their dreams, it's with great pleasure that we welcome you to the City of Los Angeles City Hall and we wish you the best for a memorable day." As I mentioned, it is signed by all members of the City Council and the mayor.
Give them a round of applause. You guys gotta take a quick photo or two and then we'll commence with our business. Karen, move a little bit to the center, you're blocking my wife, man. That I can't let happen.
I think we're good.
So many great friends out there. Ladies, thank you for all you do and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, for item one, there's a request to continue item 1H and item 11 to October 14th.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, go, go right ahead, Madam Clerk.
For item 1C, there's a correction that lien amount should be reduced to $4,758.72.
Mr. Parks, you held item 21. Did you want to, want me to come back to you later?
Please, let me finish.
Okay, no problem.
Mr. President, for item 15, the amending motion 15A has been circulated.
Okay, so item 15, I have some cards. Dale Goldsmith, Brad, what, what, what? I do not have to? That's what I thought. So Brad, Dale Goldsmith, is it Ron Hirsch? Please come forward.
Excuse me, Mr. President, just a reminder that this is a fair hearing matter requiring the council members' heightened attention to the speaker at the podium or at their monitors at their desks.
Heightened attention, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm just gonna sort of explain this, colleagues. Item number 15 is a development application in my district. This item has been appealed. This item was reviewed by CCC, CPC and by Plum. Plum denied the, denied the appeal and supported the applicant, a position that I share. Since that time, though, additional voluntary conditions are being offered by the applicant to address some of the concerns. And so my amending motion would incorporate those and enshrine them into the action today.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. So if you could identify yourself and pay attention to the clock, sir.
Thank you. My name is Brad Torgan on behalf of the appellant, GE Real Property. We renew all the prior objections, including those made before Plum on, on the 16th. You can't dump traffic from an 81-unit apartment building onto a 20-foot alley with an unsignalized intersection at one end and a Ralph's parking lot at the other end and not create potentially significant impacts. You can't construct a six-story building next to a one-story building without significant noise impacts, and the applicant's consultant even acknowledged that. And those, those two in particular haven't been adequately analyzed. Now, at Plum, voluntary conditions were offered up and I believe added as part of the recommendation. We'd ask that they be made actual conditions rather than voluntary conditions. Voluntary implies to us just that, that they're not enforceable and that they're only at the goodwill of the, the applicant and we'd like that they actually be conditioned so they can be enforced. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goldsmith, Dale? No Dale Goldsmith? Ron Hirsch? No Ron Hirsch? Juan Akala?
I pass.
Okay, then, Mr. Bonin, for you to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask for an eye vote on the amending motion 15A, which amends the Plum Committee report.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
It's adopted as amended.
Okay, let's go to item 22, held by cards. Mr. Akala? Item 22, Mr. Akala. Okay, Mr. Walsh, if you're here? Yes, I see you, Mr. Walsh. No applause. Yes, Mr. Walsh, welcome.
Welcome. Welcome to you. Really enjoyed those two hours, how wonderful the city is. Number 22, again, this is REAP in this great city of ours. What we have here, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, stay tuned to public comment. And these concern landlords who didn't fix your prop, your apartment. You go to the city, the city writes them up and then the landlord fixes it or the landlord doesn't get your rent anymore. You continue to pay it, but you pay it to the city. This is an excellent, you don't find this in, in right-wing cities like Glendale. But here in Los Angeles, we have a wonderful REAP program. Stay tuned, I'll be back, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, do we have all of the individuals that we need? After this item, we will be going into closed session. So the C, I see the CAO. All right, Mr. Parks, you ready? And that's item 21.
21. Thank you very much. I asked city staff to come up. We'd just like to give you a brief overview of a pilot program that this motion talks about, and it kind of hits on a couple of things that the Chamber and talked about earlier, assisting in hiring veterans, assisting in dealing with homeless veterans, but also addressing it through our gross receipts tax. And I want to thank Mr. Kocorian for seconding this and moving it forward. But first of all, if the City Attorney is here, I'd like you to start off by just letting us know this is legal and what the, the parameters are, and then we can get from the CAO and the CLA and Office of Finance on how they perceive we might move forward on this.
Certainly. Deputy City Attorney Dan Whitley. We have worked with Mr. Parks' office on this for some time now. In general, the city can give a subsidy based on hiring employees. There might be some details we'll need to vet as the city staff starts giving us some more, more details on what program they're going to do, but in general, this is, this is a program that the city can do.
Okay. And also, could you comment on the fine line you drew as to all businesses that do business in the city must be allowed to participate, but what we've been able to carve out, they must hire city employees, city residents?
Yes, among other things, the city must treat all businesses in the city equally. We have a duty of consistency under our California Constitution and our charter. So we can't target a subsidy to specific businesses with our tax code. We need, need to make that equally available to all businesses in, in the city.
Okay. And then we put a limit, as this pilot's talking about, a million dollars, at least to see how this works. And I know the CAO, at least in the meeting, grabbed their chest and said a million dollars. We just want to, you comment on the sense of how you might see this operate.
Well, that's how the City, CAO, given the million dollars out of the, the budget, it's a, you know, for the purposes of this effort, it's something that the City Council can appropriate towards this effort, set it aside and, you know, given that there is a limit, it's, it's probably something that we could, along with the CLA, try to help identify.
Okay. And then from Office of Finance, have you been looking at how this might get implemented as it relates to being a part of the annual taxing of the businesses?
Yes, sir. Robert Lee, Office of Finance. What we've been doing is we're going with the referral information from the federal and the state information as to their work problems. And we're looking at what information we can incorporate into our own application, what criteria we need regarding proof of being an employee for a year, that they're inside the city and whatnot. And once we compile all that, we will work with City Attorney, CAO, to implement.
Okay, and you mentioned the federal program, colleagues. I think we approved a motion recently to request a, the city support extend, extending the federal program that expired December 2013. And so that's another facet, although it's much broader than this. But certainly it's something that, from the federal level, let me ask Sharon, who was in the meeting, maybe give us an oversight from the CLA's office.
Yes, we did have a meeting regarding this issue. It is a program that could be implemented. We just need to establish the correct parameters for Office of Finance to actually implement the program. Some of the parameters might include continued employment of those individuals so that we don't have rapid turnover in order to get this tax credit. That's one of the parameters. There may be some parameters that include full-time employment, those type of things, but those would be developed and reported back.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd just like to add one amendment to the motion, that we add as a category veterans with families at that higher level with the disabled, but also add veterans with families. And that way, I think we've covered all the categories. Thank you very much. I ask for an eye vote.
Okay, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to first thank Mr. Parks for his leadership on this really important issue. My dad was a combat veteran of World War II. And when he came home from the war, like many other people, he bought a house with his veterans' benefits and those veterans helped to build the San Fernando Valley. But now, our veterans come home without those kinds of opportunities. And Los Angeles is the homeless veteran capital of the United States. 11% of the homeless veterans in the country live in our city. There's as many as 8,000 homeless veterans on the streets of Los Angeles on any given day. So the more that we can do to try to provide opportunity for those who've served our country and, and sacrificed for us, the, the more we can do of that, the better off we will be as, as a city and the better we'll be able to say thank you to, to those who've served. This is exactly the kind of gross receipts reform that we should be focusing on. This is a, a reform of the gross receipts tax that helps businesses relieve their gross receipts burden in a way that is directly linked to hiring, to creating new jobs, to stimulating our economy and also to benefiting our veterans who are in need at the same time. So this is exactly the right step forward. We need to do more of these kinds of programs where the tax relief is targeted to hiring. And, and again, especially hiring our, our veterans who are in so much need of our help. So, Mr. Parks, thank you for your leadership. I'm proud to join with you and ask you for an eye vote.
Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you very much. Have any of you at the table met with the Los Angeles County Commission on Veteran Affairs?
No.
Okay, Los Angeles County has a Commission on Veterans Affairs. Members, everybody, we got to collaborate. This is a great idea, but please, reach out to them as well, because I think that's worthy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and, Mr. Parks, great work. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
It's adopted as amended.
What is, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I cut you off.
It's adopted as amended.
Okay, great. With that said, we're going to move Mr. City Attorney to closed session, item, Mr. Parks.
Could we look at 28? We have a short verbal motion to get, we can get that resolved. It basically is a settlement, which I think we all agree with. Just wanted to add a verbal motion.
I, well, I'm gonna get there. You want to do it right, Miss?
I thought we'd just get, release whoever's sitting around waiting.
Okay, item 28, then?
Yes.
I have two cards on that. I have. I have Mr. Herman and Akala. Come on, Mr. Akala, come on, you're right there. Let's go. Okay, then, Mr. Akala, you're up.
I don't know. On 28, I wasn't quite prepared, but let's see, communication from the city attorney relative to the purchasing of real property pursuant to the settlement agreement of the Zakaya at the Los Angeles Planning Commission of the Los Angeles Superior Court, case number BCA 41965. Who the hell can understand?
Okay, now, let's stay on the subject.
I know, on the subject of why is city council ruling over everybody?
He is not talking about this. No, you're not on the subject. Thank you, Mr. Akala. Let's move forward. No, Mr. Akala, you're disrupting now. Okay, and you were not on subject matter. Let's then prepare to vote on this item, or, Mr. Parks, I'm so sorry. I forgot.
Let me just apologize. I had no idea we were going to get into that, but I just want to add one verbal motion that these properties are going to be purchased from very specific funds, that if the city should later dispose of them or sell them, that those funds should be reimbursed from the sale of that property.
That's fine. Okay, then, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay. John, Mr. Walsh, I think we were going to move to 23, and I had a card from Mr. Walsh. So, sergeants, you can begin to get prepared to remove everybody from the -- Mr. Herman, no applause. No applause. It's a disruption, no applause. No, you're disrupting right now. Yes, Mr. Walsh.
Shoot them down. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns the deal you made with DWP. Brian Darcy, Ron Galperin, the controller. Let me tell you now, this is a deal. A back-room deal. When you don't see anybody getting up to protest it, you know that it's already a slam dunk on number 23. They'll go in the back room, they'll talk about it. But what you have to understand here is the DWP is a scourge, not only on this city, it's the 100-year-old pipe broke. West Hollywood is part of DWT territory. We have an infrastructure that is falling apart. It is an Armageddon infrastructure. And what do we hear after two hours, this DWP deal? What does it do? It keeps the fat cats in there. Even the ratepayer advocate is against this deal. And what this does, remember, they are not interested in repairing the infrastructure. Incidentally, if you go to my website, there was a main break down in South LA that the LA Times didn't cover, a DWP main break, because I'm waiting for the first black person to come up to me and say, "John, you're too tough on the city council. They're not racist." I'm waiting for that person. Of course, there wasn't one damn story about the main break in South LA, because that's where the blacks and the Hispanics live. When people like my grandmother, my Jewish grandmother west of La Brea, where the Jewish people live, when something blows up, it's a big, big, big story. This is a racist organization, HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm waiting. Black people, tell me that the city is not racist. I'm waiting.
Okay, thank you. Sergeants, clear the council chambers. We're going to go into closed session. Principles only, so, folks, let's clear the chambers.
Mr. City Attorney, we're out of executive session. What's before us?
Item one, call special for cards.
Item one has been called, Mr. Walsh. If you want to come to the microphone, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Point of order, you started the meeting before the doors were opened. You started the public part of the meeting before we had a chance to get in here. You do that a number of times. We didn't hear what happened.
Hold this time, hold this time. For the record, Mr. City Attorney, we called the meeting back to order. We called the first speaker. This is the first speaker. There's been no business until the first speaker spoke.
That is correct.
Item one, call special for cards.
Item one has been called, Mr. Walsh. If you want to come to the microphone, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Point of order, you started the meeting before the doors were opened. You started the public part of the meeting before we had a chance to get in here. You do that a number of times.
Hold his time, hold his time. For the record, Mr. City Attorney, we call the meeting back to order. We call the first speaker. This is the first speaker. There's been no business until the first speaker spoke.
That is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, continue on your time. Thank you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential, or tweeting at HollywoodDems. And these are the protests and appeals, the building and safety. Again, you do a good job on building and safety. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org.
Wanacala?
I am in direct opposition to all this damn illegal liens that you put on the people. I am in direct opposition to what you do to people that already own a little place to live. You know what the Prime Minister of India said? By the year 2021, something like that, the whole of India is going to have a roof over their heads. Now, a country you call backwards is talking about providing the basic human right of a roof over your head, while this great stupid society is making everybody homeless with tax liens, all kinds of liens. Why don't you get it together and just get a flat tax and put everybody in a home and quit talking about homeless veterans, homeless this, homeless that? It's time to end homelessness. All these liens are not helping anybody other than City Hall. And they're not even helping City Hall because somebody's printing money over there. Why don't they just give you enough money? Why don't they?
Mr. President, this is an item about building and safety.
Speak to the specific issue, Mr. Akala.
Well, I have a specific issue with homelessness.
All right, thank you for your comments. You're not on the topic. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Robert Stevens. Robert Stevens? No, Robert Stevens. Next, Mr. Herman.
It's a very bad day when you have a white nigger up here trying to say that in CD10 and CD10, Herb Wesson. And what about the two under Mr. Krikorian, item G and item H? And then we have Mr. Corritz for what? $5,558.41. The whole problem here today is the interest you're charging against the public. It's not the bottom line of paying the citation. The bottom line is people want to live in a home, in a home without a lien, provisions to live in their home without a lien, and yet be notified in the most appropriate manner by certified mail by Mr. Charles and the Department of Building and Safety. I demand the FBI investigate you guys and investigate the Department of Veterans Affairs right here, USA, for violation of housing rights to veterans and people who are homeless today.
No other speakers on this issue? Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. There's a request to continue item 1K to October 14.
That's fine. I'm okay with that. 1K. Thank you very much. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Next item.
Item 27, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh. Members, if, Mr. Walsh, before you speak, members, is there any objection? I do have some members who have to go to their districts. I'm going to call on a one-minute comment on these cards. If you have any additional comments, any objection? Mr. Walsh, any objection? Thank you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. New kids on the block installation? Great. But I want, now, I have, I'm going to start putting the condition of these stars that are up there on my website. You have to spend, I understand the nonprofit that runs the Walk of Fame estimates about $12 million to restore the Hollywood Walk of Fame. All the tourists show, look at how terrible and what horrible shape many of these stars are. Now, if this is denied, if you think they're in great shape, fine. Some of them can't even read the names. They're in such bad shape. And these aren't old stars. The old, the first, the only living person, Joanne Woodward from the first group of stars at Hollywood Highlands, she's the oldest star. Her star is in great shape. Some that are only a month older in bad shape.
Mr. Herman.
New kids on the block, you got a star. Thanks to all of you, all your constituents that sat here to hear the presentation. Always on my mind, step by step. Always on my mind, step by step, step by step. How I want you to be at my door, in the world you are. See a picture of me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. Thank you. No, I want you to rest the star, the star. Thank you. You're through. Sergeant, thank you very much. Mr. Hunt? Mr. Hunt? No, Mr. Hunt? Carl Williams? Carl Williams?
Yeah. I cry racism and the county of LA.
Would you state your name for the record, sir?
Say it again?
State your name for the record.
Carl Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yeah. I cry racism and the county of LA, starting with the mayor and his colleagues, the city council and their colleagues, chief of police and his colleagues, and the sheriff and his colleagues.
He is not talking about item 27.
Thank you very much.
And evil people, all y'all to oppress the blacks and the poor.
All right. You've got to speak to the item, sir. Thank you. If you filled out a card and public comment, you can speak about anything. All right, thank you. This is last card, Wanacala. Mr. Akala, you've been informed by the clerk. You're out of time. Have a nice seat. Next item will be up, let's open the roll on this item. I apologize. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
And thank you, clerks, for informing me. I'm sorry I didn't hear the earlier comment on the card. Next item.
Item 32, call special for cards.
Will be noted, Mr. Wanakala? Mr. Herman?
Point 32. How many years did we wait for an ordinance on graffiti? How many years? And yet, again, Krikorian, who's crying that we have to get more money to put our murals and save them from the protection of all those who vandalize them. Murals are murals. And the bottom line to this, Mr. City Attorney, the Department of Culture Affairs has no protection for our murals. It costs us too much damn money to put a protection coat to protect the goddamn murals, and you still get them all screwed up in our city. Batman is tired of our murals being boarded up. Batman is tired of you putting whitewash on our murals. And why? Because Batman saw the mural that you had to remove and replace, right? Overa Street. Why? Because it's our opinion, First Amendment rights, Constitution, freedom of speech.
Yeah, for the record, Mr. City Attorney, Batman did not have foul language when he was on TV. Next speaker, John Walsh. John, relax. You're out of time. Wait for public comment. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Clerks. No other speakers on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes. Next item.
Item number 33, call special for cards.
For the record, Mr. Walsh is out of time. Please note that his card will be filed in there. Mr. Akala, please note your card will be noted on that. Last card is Seth. Please, Seth, pronounce your last name correctly.
Seth Meroits. Just here if there are any questions.
Oh, good. No questions? That's okay. We're okay. So on that, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes. All right, Seth, thank you very much. Have a good day. Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
General public comment, and there will be a one-minute public comment. This would be the first call, Sean Murphy. Note, Sean Murphy is there. Beavis, is Beavis here? Beavis, please come forward. And please help me pronounce your last name correctly.
Beavis Igbinaba, sir.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman and audience are trying to see if Mr. Bonian can team up with we people for Venice Beach, because we are vendors, trying to make honest living. If there's any way can he address we coming from Venice Beach to try to do honest living? Because we're not doing nothing wrong, but trying to make us Venice Beach a very beautiful place. We are Rastafarian. Please, Mr. Chairman, if there's any way we can address Mr. Bonian.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Yes, as the chamber said, we have a lot of tourism. You know what we lead in? Sex tourism. All over the world, they come here to have sex with 14-year-old boys in Hollywood. Finally, after years and years of my talking about it and asking the LAPD, they caught a guy. What was he? He's a fire chief. Relax. He's a New York fire chief. He got caught with two 14-year-old boys in bed. Now, perverts don't watch this, but perverts of the world, come to LA and you can have any kid you want, and nobody up here is going to say a damn word about it. This is the under-18 sex capital of the world. David Zan, I want to say, Mr. Parks, you sounded like me in your statement, the way you attacked David Zanheiser. I have said the same thing. He doesn't do a good job. He did a great job at LA Weekly. This is the worst thing I can say about you, Mr. Parks. You're sounding like John Walsh. Want to name HollywoodHighlands.org?
All right. Mr. James. Mr. James. Is there Mr. James here? Note that file. Mr. Hunt? Excuse me. This is, Mr. City Attorney, it doesn't have the right name. This is Mr. Herman's card.
Now to the racists. It's time to impeach our president, Obama, and set the standards. And that is because we have ridiculous premature born Krikorian on this side with his hand on his head, thinking about it. And then yet, Mr. Weezer crying about his disabled child. Bottom line is, Mr. Weezer, you deserve what you get. No, this is public comment, general public comment. I'm going to speak for that one goddamn minute and let you know the facts.
Direct it to me, Mr. Herman.
And I'm directing it to the world that we have pedophirs in Los Angeles because our mayor invites them here to take over the prostitution that we're encountering. And at the same time, Mr. Peppa Pig there, you can laugh along with your companion, Mr. Krikorian, because the bottom line is, one minute, I criticize you for your dumb ass, rude one minute for everyone, and general public comment. Call us into the police commission meeting because we were there representing veterans and homeless. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt? Mr. Hunt? No, Mr. Hunt? Carl Williams?
Oh, man. Mike Bonian, why are you are so racist? You get taxpayers' money ear in, ear out for harassing the black vendors and Venice Beach boardwalk. You're not protecting the public. People getting run over by a car, stabbed, raped. You got, you got one of the biggest drugs problem in your vicinity, and you're not solving the drugs problem. You got one of the biggest gang violence and gang problem, all kind of evil stuff taking place in your vicinity, and you don't do nothing about it, but you waste taxpayers' money to fight the black vendors and Venice Beach boardwalk. Spend the money to protect the tourists, protect the public, and stop use the money to harass black vendors and Venice Beach boardwalk. Stop, stop harass us!
Robert Lee Stevens. Sergeant, someone was yelling from the rear of that. Please give him an assignment on that. Brian Barajas? Robert Lee Stevens is not here?
All right. I guess I want to say something. It's this. The change which the Prime Minister of India, Narendra Modi, has presented to the world is that leadership in the United States has to consist of what leadership is. Obviously, we're in a dire strait. That's obvious. But the problem is that every individual who does not understand that the President of the United States has to be impeached doesn't get it. You don't get the fact that we have a traitor in office. That's a fact. And I'm wondering that with all the chaos which was presented here with water shortages, commerce not being built in the United, for the government of the United States, but the world too, I'm starting to wonder if anybody here gives a shit about our country or the future civilization.
Next speaker will be Kenneth Jenkins. As I want to remind you, the freedom of speech in the federal court allows people to use any language.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Wesson and Pro Tem and City Council members. My name's Kenneth Jenkins, and I'm here in regards to LAMC 4215, the Venice Beach Revised Ordinance. It's a continued, a lot of us vendors are continually being harassed in regards to that ordinance. I myself in particular, you know, I'm a photographer as well as a designer. I am actually being harassed and given tickets in regards to my photography actually being put in frames. And what is deemed nominal utility, that should be an item that has more than one use. A frame is simply what you put a picture in. I've been given numerous tickets in regards to, in regards to that. And I think that's just a waste of taxpayers' you know, money and time to be constantly given tickets and asked and told by the police to remove, you know, my photography, which is a part of the ordinance.
Thank you for your comment. Is it Jacob R.? Jacob R., 46th Street in Los Angeles? Note that card, please. Douglas? Is there a Douglas family here? Is that Charlie Douglas? Excuse me if I don't have it right.
You make a wrong mistake, boss. Good afternoon, Councilmember. Well, I'm a vendor from Venice Beach, and I come to see if I could talk to Mr. Michael Bonian. I make my cap. I make my necklace. I'm on Venice Beach over 13 years now. No store in Venice Beach sell a cap like this. Mr. Bonian, no store in Los Angeles sell a cap like this. I make my clothes. I'm a tailor. You could look at my passport. And every time you guys make an ordinance, you just kick out the black people. It's just few of us you kick out. The Dreamcatchers sell downtown. Yeah, all the skulls you leave on the boardwalk sell downtown. All the tattoo that giving people Russian, all those things, you know? That's bad. We make our thing. And you say America, God bless America, and I have a trade as a tailor, and I can live off of my trade. I don't want to sell drugs. Please, Mr. Bonian, see if you could, my number is 818-454, you know? 4301. See if you can have a meet or another guy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
William Bill Watkins. William Bill Watkins. Henry, no last name. Henry, is that you, Henry? Henry, is that you, Henry? No last name.
Read what you see. And as we know, Mr. Calamino Labange and his predecessor, Mr. Big John from Bell Ferrera, been sheltering our money on an ongoing basis, and they failed to come for it yet. Now, in the cowboy movies, they say when the money leaves the bank, you got to cut off the people who took it at the pass. And this is, we are at the past, and we are at the present, and we are at the future. And everything you took in the past, interest is due past one year. California Government Code 20283, 20285 shows that you are expected to know how to provide money to Cal-Pers and Lasers for the benefit of public employees.
Alvin Harris. Alvin Harris. Mr. Harris is not here. Juan Icaula. Last card.
You got rid of most of the speakers with your stupid closed session. And this piggy, Piggly Wiggly never stopped sitting. And that Piggly Wiggly was born prematurely. And you've been called a white nigger for a reason. There's a lot of white niggers here.
I object to the statement, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Attorney.
I don't use the word nigger lightly. I do it for a reason. Because you behave like a tyrant. That makes you a white nigger. And a tyrant will go around taking everything from everybody, and that's what city council is. City council is a white nigger. You get us with the parking meters, you get us with all kinds of tickets for bullshit that doesn't even exist.
All right, that completes public comment. And I object to the language, Mr. City Attorney, and you noted it. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, I thank you for noting that, sergeants. Thank you for your help today. This concludes public comment at this time. Members, I want to ask the clerk, what's on the agenda? What's on next?
Council has motions for post and referral.
So ordered, any announcements, members? Any announcements? Mr. Park?
I'd just like to let the public and also my colleagues know that Mr. Errol Siegel is going to extend that Clean Up LA campaign for another week, so he can bring in a free load of trash from, that would take you all the way to October the 12th. The same guidelines, one truck per cus, truck or car per customer. And the only thing that they will not accept are liquids and hazardous materials and food waste. So he will extend that at 2,000 West Slauson Avenue. And it was, they're open from 6:00 AM to 5:45 PM, seven days a week.
Thank you. Is that there Slauson and Wester?
Very close.
Very close. Thank you for your leadership on that, Mr. Parks. Mr. Keritz, did you have an announcement?
I did. I just wanted to let my colleagues and the public know that the state of California now has an official ban on plastic bags. It was signed today by Governor Jerry Brown.
Well done. Good job.
We thank you. Thank you for your work on that. Any other announcements? I've an announcement, I'll bring you in a motion tomorrow. You'll enjoy it. Thank you. All right. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Just wanted to announce that this morning, the LA Metro broke ground on the Regional Connector Project. This is a monumental step forward for transit in Los Angeles. $1.4 billion project that will connect the Gold Line, Blue Line, Expo Line, Red Line, and Purple Lines. It was a dramatic step forward in increasing mobility throughout Southern California, and it's expected to be opened by 2020. In the meantime, creating thousands and thousands of jobs in the Southern California economy and laying the foundation for our economy for the next half-century or so. So a big day for Metro. And people need to know, there is going to be some traffic issues that are caused by this when construction, major construction begins. But in the long term, it's going to dramatically improve mobility in Los Angeles.
Well, thank you, Mr. Krikorian. There'll be a lot of traffic throughout on any improvements that we are, and that's part of the problem, part of the challenge. And I know Mr. Keritz and I were working on the water breakage up on Sunset in West Hollywood, 256 feet from the city of Los Angeles, impact, which always goes. But this is good news there, Mr. Krikorian. Any other announcements? Adjourned motions? Adjourned motions, Mr. Parks. Please all rise for adjourned motion.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd ask that we adjourn again in memory of our former mayor, Tom Bradley, who passed away September the 29th, 1998, 14 years ago. And we've tried to do this annually just as a remembrance. He's a five-year-term mayor of the city of Los Angeles, serving between '73 and '93. His family moved from Texas when he was seven years old. He grew up in the area of Central Avenue over in Council District Nine. He was raised by a single mom, served by, served the LAPD for 21 years, reaching the rank of lieutenant, the highest position an African-American could achieve at that time. When his promotional opportunities were stifled, he then went to law school and received a law degree and later became an attorney, and then he resigned from LAPD. One thing that's interesting about his career, he became one of the first African-American council members in city council. But when he, his career was almost bracketed by major racial turmoil. The '65 riot was just before or while he was running for mayor the first time. He later became mayor in '73. And at the end of his career, the '92 riot bracketed his particular career. But it's something in which he's achieved something that no one else will do, and that's five terms as a mayor of the city of Los Angeles.
Very good. And he went to Poly High School when it was down on Washington Boulevard where Trade Tech is today, a great Bruin Track Man from UCLA. And I know Mr. Keritz and I will want to shout out, we were both on his youth council, as was Wendy Gruehl and others as well, Mr. Reyes as well, he was on the youth council. The one and only Tom Bradley, that's why they named the tower after him. And a very special, thank you, Mr. Parks, for remembering that. I want to adjourn in memory of Sam Sook. Sam Sook was a great hiker, Korean-American in Griffin Park. Every morning, he'd climb that trail, and every day I'd throw the football at him, and pretty soon he'd start catching it. A wonderful man who loved that, who loved that park and loved his community. He survived by his wonderful wife. He is donating money, his wife is in memory of him for a bench in Griffin Park through the Los Angeles Park Foundation. I ask for adjourned memory of Sam Sook, a great American, a great hiker, a great friend. Members, seeing other adjourned motions, go ahead and serve the city well, and we'll see you tomorrow here at 10:00 AM. Thank our clerks, sergeants, and staff, and especially Kenny on the sound booth. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.